Call this meeting to order, standard site pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For which we stand.
Let's pray. Lord, we come to you today asking for guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. A few seconds for your own intentions? Thank you. Um, I'd like to, uh, let's take a look at this agenda. We got a lot of people here today, which is great to see everybody. Um, I'd like to move, uh, the HR report, which is under item, uh, I. Let's move that up. Uh, let's handle that. Uh, Sheriff West has an emergency he needs to get to, so I'm gonna have, uh, Sheriff West give his report right away after public comment, and then let's have the HR give, uh, her, her, uh, report and, and talk about this PTO plan. So, uh, if that's all right with everybody here, I'd get a motion to approve the agenda with that item moved up.
A second?
Motion and a second. Uh, all those in favors, any discussion to that motion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, opportunity for public comment. I'm gonna hold, uh, if anyone's here to talk about the sick leave, the PTO plan, uh, let's, let's hold that for, uh, the next item, which will be HR. Uh, any other, uh, public comment? Anyone else wanna make a public comment? Not seeing anyone rush the table, so let's move on. Sheriff West, if you'd like to give your report.
Morning, Commissioners. Thanks for moving me forward here. Excuse me. Um, uh, basically, uh, what we're looking at is, we, we got a increase in, um, calls for service are on the rise, as always. Um, we had 300 more dispatch calls this month than we did last year at this month. Um, so, overall dispatch calls are up over 16,000, which is more than we were at the end of the year last time, so, uh, been very busy. Uh, between the jail, deputies, dispatch, and everyone's been knocking it out of the park, staying ahead of the game. I'm not gonna use the quiet word, but it's been really good this fall. So, um, really don't have much to add. Uh, just wanna, uh, say, uh, please give a quick prayer to, uh, Sheriff Tucker Amiet. He was hit on the interstate today, and, uh-
Which one?
Sheriff Tucker Amiet from Jackson County. He was in his vehicle. He seems like, it sounds like he's okay, but they did life flight him, so I'm gonna run to the hospital and check on him, so. Any questions?
You know, later this afternoon in exact, we were gonna have, uh, amongst the topics, uh, was, uh, information that you and I were at a meeting.
Yes.
Um, do you want me to text you when we get back in there, or just let me have, uh, relay everything?
If you wanna relay, that's fine.
Okay.
All right? So, I can give our prayers to Corinne and Tucker. Uh, Tucker is, uh, Tucker's wife is my first cousin. Gets a little, little close to home. How's the car? Tucker's a big boy.
Wow. Did they, did they catch you ever hit him?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, we typically go through jail and, and, uh, uh, notifications now, I guess, right after that. You guys good on, you guys need to add anything to that report? Good? Caleb? Good. Uh, let's go, if we could get, uh, Deborah in for, uh, human resources. Is there any department heads that know of, uh, some staff that, uh, needs, would like to listen to this or say anything? If, if so, I've, since I moved it up on the agenda, is, uh, maybe get ahold of some guys or, don't wanna leave anyone out here.
I would assume they're watching on.
I would assume, but there might be somebody that wants to, to say something. So, if you could get ahold of your staff members that, that this is going on, for us, please.
Well, and I think if others come in towards the end of the meeting, which is where they thought we should-
Yeah, we'll certainly let them speak some of their piece. That's, that's, that was my plan. I just, uh, someone, some people might wanna hear, but, uh, uh, Deborah's report was my only thing.
Robin Drake here.
He just went downstairs. I think I should, I think I'll get you all sick, is what I think.
You?
You. You're popular. Good morning. Would you like to face everybody? Would you like to come up and sit down and face everybody?
And certainly turn the cameras.
I will go get another-
We could flip the camera as well, but-
Yeah, but don't you hate having everybody do your back?
Good, you, with Corinne's voice sounds, I need someone sitting between.
Yeah, Deborah will probably want me to go put a mask on.
Uh, good morning Commissioners. Um, Deborah Brandsroot with Meade County Human Resources, and I was, uh, added to the agenda today as we have been working on the, um, benefit plans for Meade County. Um, this has been going on for several months, and we've come to a point where, um, we've kinda hit a crossroads, um, utilizing taxpayer benefits, uh, for, our taxpayer funds for our benefits. And so, the current policy of sick leave provides out an, uh, provides a payout to employees that have been here six years or longer, uh, and up to 240 hours of sick accrual. Currently, the cost of those employees that would be able to take, um, this option is over $238,395. That does not include taxes and the six or eight percent, uh, SDRS match. Uh, when we listen to the employees, uh, over the past couple of years, the things that were most of their demands was making sure that wages are at their, are at market, uh, wages for the area in which they live and the work in which they do. Also, that there is an annual step increase every year, that we do not have a freeze on steps, and also making sure that our benefits are held, uh, the premium stay in line with what they, um, have had over the past year or two, and not had large spikes. Some of that we have control over, some we do not. So, by retiring the sick leave payout fund, or transitioning it, we can continue to make these offers to our employees, both through doing a, um, our classification and compensation study every three years. Um, this costs us about $27,000, uh, to do this every three years. We're able to work with, um, companies that can provide a good health plan for you. As you know, in January, we're returning to Blue Cross Blue Shield, providing our employees more options. Um, at the end of, uh, I guess I could say our, collecting our estimates and quotes, the Avera plan did come in lower, but we did accept to stay with well-marked Blue Cross Blue Shield because we thought that this was a better plan for our employees. And, uh, some of them did share with me that they needed, uh, providers that provided flexibility and what their needs were versus Avera. Uh, some of them were not accepted. So, when, as, looking at their needs and then going forward, the other thing that has been kind of a hiccup for us has been our vacation plan. So, currently, the vacation plan reads that if you've been here as a new hire through your first year, you have five days of vacation. Through offering a PTO plan, we are able to give all employees, uh, zero through three years, 15 days. A second year through the fourth year, currently, uh, you earn 6.67 hours, which is 10 days, and the PTO plan would allow them 6.15 hours per pay period, or a total of 20 days. And then, the fifth through the 20th year, current plan gives you 15 days, and the new plan at 10-plus years would give you 25 days. Now, yes, PTO would be used for vacation and for sick as well, but, uh, our Commissioners are, um, are looking at and hoping to ensure that we would also have a short-term disability plan. And the short-term disability plan would cover you up to 11 weeks if you were out with any injury, sickness, illness that qualified for short-term disability. And the disability plan would be fully covered by Meade County. This would not be a cost out of, uh, any employee's pocket. Yes, it's a, it's eligible after 14 days, but it's, um, yes, eligible after 14 days of, um, receiving a doctor's note. Uh, we would still continue with the Meade County 10 holidays, and we would also keep the personal day, which was added to the benefits as a snow day. I think I'm correct on that, right? Snow day? What it was added for. Okay, that would not go away, that would stay. Uh, let's see. So, that brings us to retiring of the sick leave policy. I don't, yeah, sure. Yeah. 60% of your wage. Yes. So, if you were on a short-term disability plan, after two weeks, uh, you would receive 60% of your pay. It would not have any taxes withheld from it. So, it, it's just pure sick pay, or, uh, short-term disability pay. Or retirement, right? There's no retirement either. It's just pure pay to cover your time that you're out ill. So, currently, when you're using like a sick day, it has taxes and everything else that comes out of it. Questions? Can I ask her questions? Should I not?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, uh-
Cause we've gone through a little bit here, but I wanna go into the options next of how this works.
Go ahead and go into the options, and then I'll, I'll open it up for, uh-
Sure. No, it would be effective January 1. Mm-hmm. Yes. Okay.
Okay, I'll take some co- I'll, I'm gonna take some comments. Uh, I, I, I don't typically run a free-for-all meeting, so I, I'm gonna give everyone a chance to, to ask some questions and, uh, make some comments, uh, probably five minutes apiece. Uh, so please, as she's talking, write your questions down, um, and, uh, we'll, we'll go from there, uh, if you wanna continue. Deborah?
Okay.
And I will open it up.
Sure. So, uh, I just wanted to make sure that, first of all, that employees know that sick leave, uh, is not considered a wage. Um, I don't know that if you've known this, but as a law, it is not considered a wage. A sick leave is a benefit that Meade County or other companies give their employees. Some give three days, Meade County gives 240 hours. Um, they do cover it at your wage, but it is not considered a wage. A wage is something that is, uh, considered a contingency based on hours or time off that you've earned. So, um, when we talk about the contingency plan, we have put together three options for employees that have been here six-plus years, that they can choose to pay out, uh, any hours that are up to 240. So, if you have 6.67 hours of sick leave, um, there's still an option for you to cash that out. If you have, say, 490 hours, the, the maximum amount remains at 240. So, option one allows employees to carry over 240 hours at current wage that they can use over a period of 24 months. So, you would have 204, up to 240 hours to use over 24 months. It, and if you should leave Meade County within that 24 months, this would not be paid out. You have to use this while you're working here. And it would be paid while, if you're using it during those 24 months, it would be paid at your current wage. It would not be mixed in with your PTO. You would still have your PTO, which comes from your vacation time, and then you would have this bucket of sick leave. Uh, I'm using the word sick because that's where it's coming from, that you would have to use over a period of 24 months. Option two is you can carry over 120 of those hours and use over, um, two years, and then be paid out, um, up to 120 hours at minimum wage of 1120 per hour. And option three is a cash payout of 200 up to 240 hours at 1120 per hour. Um, we're asking that this, the options be acted on by December 5th, and if you choose not to act on any options, uh, option three will be set up as a default option. Um, if any employees feel or choose or wish to resign or retire, um, before December 22nd, you say, "What will that look like for me?", we would currently honor the plan that we have now, that you would receive your sick time up to 240 hours at your current wage, but after December 22nd, that would no longer be available. And, is there anything else I have? So, when, just kind of looking at some of the dollars, who's, you all should know what this costs the county. Um, just exercising this option right now, uh, would be to the county of cost of $111,927 just for option three at 1120 an hour. And then, if, um, if it was done at regular wage, it was $272,653. So, you can see, uh, the cost of the sick leave policy. Um, as far as I know, Meade County, uh, will continue that your retirement, when you leave, is actually your SDRS and 100% match at six or eight percent, depending on your position.
As there, I-
Corinne?
Conclude your report.
I, I would-
Oh, I thought I did that here.
You don't have to.
I- Well, in your, yes, okay. So, outside of having more time available to, to people in a PTO plan, the PTO plan is free for you to use however you want. So, if you're taking sick time, if you're taking personal time, uh, if, uh, vacation, it doesn't matter. It's not to be questioned because it is your time. Um, right now, we have vacation time, and we have sick time, and your sick time is to be used only for sick appointments, and I think if you have to care for someone that's a family member that is ill. Um, there is abuse in the sick leave, but, uh, the PTO kind of makes it 100% yours. You can use it however you would like.
Thank you, Deborah. I'll, I'll open this up to anyone that would like to ask questions, comments. I'm gonna try to limit this to, I'm gonna try to be cognizant that some of these will be questions for Deborah, as well as the Commission, so, uh, I'm gonna limit it to five minutes per person, simply so we can keep things flowing, and it looks like there's a lot of people that like to talk. Uh, it's a very important issue, so I, I wanna give everyone time, but with that said, I will, uh, with questions, it gets tough, and I'll try to be cognizant of that, but it's, it's gonna be a five-minute limit for, per person, so. Uh, Mr. Johns, please identify yourself.
Yep, James Johns, Chief Deputy, Meade County Sheriff's Office. Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission. On October 2nd, I sent an email to HR Director Deborah Brandsroot in response to concerns raised by senior employees in our office regarding potential discussions about transitioning to a PTO-based system for employee compensation. In my email, I expressed a willingness to assist in this process, as I have recognized that such a significant change would require clear communication and guidance for our teams. My primary concern was to ensure that employees were not caught off guard or left unprepared for any forthcoming adjustments. In response, Ms. Brandsroot stated, "So sorry, I have nothing to share currently. Discussions are still in progress. When decisions are made, a countywide announcement will be released. Best I can share for now." Here we are today, with a proposal that has clearly been in development by Ms. Brandsroot and this Commission. Unfortunately, every opportunity to involve employees in this process has been overlooked. Whether or not this proposal moves forward, this process exemplifies a fundamental failure of leadership. The chance to collaborate with and engage those most affected, our employees, has been entirely disregarded. As a former board member of the South Dakota Retirement System, I have firsthand experience managing complex change. Faced with funding challenges that impacted thousands of members, we chose to involve stakeholders in open and transparent discussions. stakeholders in open and transparent discussions, while changes often approached with inclusivity, foresight, and respect for those who will be most affected. Unlike this commission, we did not operate behind closed doors, nor did we sideline those directly impacted by these decisions. Additionally, all changes we implemented were applied prospectively. It was deemed unacceptable to move the goalposts for employees nearing retirement by retroactively altering their plans. Imagine dedicating yourself, or dedicating your years to preparing for your future to only have those plans derailed without notice or consultation, all for the sake of cost savings. This is precisely what this commission is proposing, and it is both unjust and disrespectful to our employees. Furthermore, it is worth recalling the illegal practices of a previous county administration which forced employees to adjust weekly time records in a manner that deprived them of overtime pay. For example, if an employee took eight hours of sick leave on a Monday but worked an additional six hours of overtime later that week, they were required to deduct those six hours from their sick leave balance instead of receiving proper compensation. This unlawful practice contributed to the high sick leave balances some employees hold today, balances they were often unable to use when they should have. Now, under this proposal, they stand to lose those hard-earned benefits, and that is unequivocally wrong. This commission has an opportunity to reconsider its approach. I urge you to pause the implementation of this proposal, thoroughly study these issues, and collaborate with employee groups to develop a sustainable plan. Conducting discussions and planning in executive session does nothing to foster trust or strengthen relationships with the employees who serve Meade County. This is a pivotal moment. I implore you to take the time to engage with those you represent, listen to their concerns, and work together to create a solution that balances the county's needs for fairness and respect for its employees. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Johns. Anybody else? Anybody else like to speak?
Ken Clubrad, Chief Deputy State's Attorney. Basic tenet of business and personal life should be, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." I'm here as an employee, not in my regular capacity of providing advice upon request. Frankly, I was not asked about legal advice in this matter. I agree with Deborah, there's nothing illegal in this proposal. You know, sick time is a benefit, and it can be changed or altered at any point in time. Like other employees, my first knowledge of this change to PTO was when this done-deal proposal was put on board docs on Saturday. So I looked at it a little bit. What is broke? What is the justification for the change? As stated in the publications, employee-work-life balance. I'm not sure what that means. I'm assuming it means enjoy your life more over work. Don't be so dedicated. Myself, I plan to get a life alert, so that if I ever have a life, I'll be alerted to it. I don't do anything, okay? I haven't been sick. I've accumulated my time. When I've been sick, I've used it. I am at, at this point, I have it written down somewhere, 495 hours, I believe, and that is just because I haven't had to be sick. And frankly, that time is my cancer life insurance. A cancer treatment may take me out for 12 weeks, which is the time that is allowed for FMLA, and that's 480 hours. If we go to a PTO without sick time, the most that would be available is six weeks' worth of time. In my case, at my age and circumstances, that's the cancer concern. For younger employees, that may be birth-of-a-child concerns. If you've got an employee who's been here six years, maybe 25, 30 years old, and's just starting a family, they're going to have to, if they take the full FMLA, they're going to have to do six weeks without pay, and that may be just something that's not available to them. Also stated, reason was overall employee well-being. I'm not sure what that particularly means. For either of those two reasons, thanks for taking away or directing my choices in what I choose to do. The county fiscal concerns. What was presented is that if everybody took out what they could, it'd cost $238,000. What's not stated, and what I don't know, is what is paid out annually in an amount in excess of the 240 hours of vacation, or what would be PTO in the future. The statements were, "If we paid out everything at regular wages for the sick time, it'd be $272,000." That never happens in a year. You know, look at it on an annual basis as well, because certainly your employees look at it on an annual basis. You stated that we'll have more time available switching over to a PTO. My circumstance is I'm 10-plus years. I get 10 hours of vacation each month, 6.67 hours of sick time each month. Switching over, it would go to 15.38 of PTO, and in my case, that loses 1.29 per pay period, or I lose 33 hours, 33.54 hours of paid time by switching over to paid-time WOAP. So it's just not true that we're going to get more hours. You're taking away what we're getting, what we're already getting.
But you're adding sick...
Just let Mr. Clubrad, just let Mr. Clubrad finish. You can address those.
I want to confirm where it came from.
You can address that when he's done. Trying to keep him on a time. Thank you.
The existing payout on separation is 240 hours of vacation, 240 hours sick. That'll be changed to 240 hours combined. How many times have we paid out to an employee more than 240 hours, and how much does that have? Regardless, it's been talked about during budget sessions that it's estimated that our annual personnel expenses for the county is $11 million, and we're talking about $272,000 against $11 million. Personal impact? At present, I have 240 hours of vacation. I'm use it or lose it every month. What I choose to do for my personal life is to sleep in five days. That's what I enjoy doing on vacation. And I have 495 hours of sick time. If you remove the sick time above 240, which I could have used if I had a major need, the loss to me is $12,192,000, or $12,192. For the three options remaining, I can bank it, or I can bank half of it. I haven't used it so far. It's not anticipated I'm going to use it in the future.
Your time, Mr. Clubrad.
Thank you. Overall, I'm out 87, uh, $20,000, given my financial situation. Thank you.
Do you have some of his questions that you would like to address while he's...
I did, but I think, Ken, I think you answered, because you were adding your sick plus your personal time together when you said you were losing hours, the 33-something?
Correct.
You're adding your sick plus your personal.
Correct, as present versus the PTO.
Okay, all right.
Anybody else like to speak?
Ken, I, I want to, I want to mention, I believe you misunderstood when you mentioned the cancer. You said you'd only have 440 hours.
240.
Or you would have, okay. Under this plan, you'd have 880 hours, so you would have more than double, because you would automatically get the disability. On top of that...
If I jump through the hoops for that and qualify, all of which are ifs.
Well...
We haven't seen a policy?
Well, cancer would, but I'm sure this policy you will review more in depth than you did the ambulance policy.
Apparently, the board has had more opportunity to review this than has been presented to the employees. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak?
My name is Deputy Gary Rogers. I've been an employee with the county. January will be my third-year anniversary. I'm not here to speak on what this policy could do to me. I'm here to support the people that I work with, and I just want you guys to understand, you come, you come and you bring this before us. Understand that the holes that this could leave, not only in the sheriff's department, in the sheriff's office, but in other parts of the county, could be extremely detrimental. There are people that are, their jobs, you will never know what they do for us, and if those are holes that appear because of this policy coming forth, they are gaps that you cannot easily fill, and I would urge you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Does anyone else care to speak?
Good morning, Commissioners Rhea Crane.
Good morning. Dawn Christensen, Deputy Auditor. What I'm bringing to you today is a little bit different than the employees with longevity. I don't stand as much to lose as they do. I would like to speak a little bit on some concerns me and the other staff in the auditor's office have just regarding some details in the policy. One of them being the one-hour increments, just some clarification maybe on why that is in the policy. There are lots of times that there's employees that take 15 minutes, that take a half hour, whether they need to run and take care of a child at school, they need to run to a doctor's appointment that's only going to take a half hour. If I have to take an hour, well, there's work that needs to be done, but I'm not going to come back after just my half hour or 15 minutes of being gone, because I have to take that hour of leave. However, you do have dedicated employees that will just make up that time otherwise, but that's two sides of it, and I just, my personal opinion is that part of the policy could be eliminated. Also, the disciplinary action. It states in the policy that that is up to HR. I question as to why that is not up to the department heads. They are the ones that know when their employees are working, when they are gone, and if they are keeping track of that time. And as far as the disciplinary action, they are the ones that are going to know how that disciplinary action affects their departments. The policy does not state at the 240 payout at what rate that's getting paid out. I would assume that it's at the regular rate.
You're meaning for vacation?
The PTO. The new policy does not state the rate the PTO is being paid out at, and I think that should be clear in the policy. And then some other things that we have run into with payroll. When does the accrual stop? Does the accrual stop when employee is finished with employment, their last day of employment? Does the accrual stop when they give their two-weeks' notice? That's just something that's not also clear in the policy. Also, we're just learning about this too, and there's a lot of things that we need to figure out in our office as far as payroll. Logistics-wise, how we're going to make it all work with the program. A lot of figures that need to be given to us because payroll is already a short week, the week of Christmas. We have a day and a half to do it, and there's just going to be a lot more work to do that week. The letter states that the final accrual is on December 22nd. While it's true that December 22nd is your use it or lose it date, we're not doing the accrual on the 22nd, that's a Sunday, and we cannot do that accrual until that payroll is posted. So that final accrual likely wouldn't happen until December 26th, after payroll is posted. And then, sorry, going, moving forward, currently, we have use-it-or-lose-it dates every month. That will need to be changed to every other week, because it'll be, it'll fall on the final day of each pay period if we're doing accruals by pay period. And then, those accruals won't happen on that date either. They will most likely happen the Friday after that payroll is posted, so every other Friday on the payday. But a lot of this comes back to the lack of communication, a lot of things that wasn't communicated with our office that does payroll, a lot of things that we would be able to give you input on and just help to figure out how the whole process is going to work.
I do have a few questions as well about the one-hour increments, and that comes down to, we have in the past asked people to use vacation to complete a 40-hour week if their work time did not give them a full 40 hours, and we've come across a couple circumstances where they were told that they do not have to work 40 hours a week, so we just need clarification as to what the minimum expected hours are and when we need to be asking department heads about their employees' work hours. I do have some questions too about the 40-hour carryover, 40 hours that we can carry over. Is that...
That does not need to be there, Rhea.
Sure. There's a paragraph in the announcement that has the 40-hour week carryover. That was originally added when there was some maximum, different maximums added, but that was removed and changed to all 240. Yes.
And I think I understood you correctly, Deborah, but can I just verify that? If we were to choose to use the carryover 120 or the 240, that that is used at our discretion with, at any more than three days? We don't need a doctor's note, et cetera?
Correct. So I'm just going to call it "sick," because that's what it's coming from at this time. So that's "sick." If you chose to carry over 240 hours for 24 months, you use that at your current wage when it's approved by your department head or supervisor, and yes, it's not "sick." It can be used for vacation or appointments, whatever that employee. It's just one of the options to retire the program. Correct.
Thank you.
And the same as option two, those 120 hours, same way.
Thank you.
That concludes your, is there, would you like to address some of these questions that they brought up, Ms. Brands?
Well, I think we should get an email to Deborah copying the commissioners, laying down your payroll concerns, so we've got the detail on those. I do get a little, I understand why you do the one-hour increments, because the paperwork can be tremendous.
There's, there's no difference in the paperwork between a 15-minute vacation and an hour of vacation.
Yeah, I will tell you, I just, I don't see how anybody can do anything in 15 minutes by between walking out of the building and going somewhere and coming back.
I, I think it comes down to, it wouldn't be in just a 15-minute situation. It's more of a, if somebody has gone to a doctor's appointment, it takes them two hours and 15 minutes.
15 minutes, right, yeah, which I can understand if you, so if you go like, you've got to take a minimum of certain amount of time, but then after that, you can take it in 15-minute increments. It's different from saying you can take a 15-minute increment and say that you are only gone for 15 minutes. I don't see how anybody can just take 15 minutes.
I think it's more so been used in the case of people taking care of their children after school. They have to be gone for an hour and 15 minutes, and they're not able...
That's different from what I was taking from you, so I'm clarifying this. So you're saying, but there should be a base, I mean, nobody, nobody should be able to just take 15. That doesn't make any sense.
I can't tell you that I know of anybody that's taken just 15 minutes. I think it's an hour and 15 minutes, or an hour and 3/4, or something like that.
Okay, so the request isn't that they can just take 15, it's that, once they hit, let's say you have to take at least a half hour, and then you can take it in 15s after that, is that what, that makes sense to you?
That would be helpful, yes.
Yeah, because, like I said, I just, if somebody's telling you that only took them 15 minutes to walk over to the school and do something and come back, they're running pretty ding hard.
And honestly, those are, those are just employees that are legitimately trying to make sure that they're dedicating their 40 hours to the county.
Well, I totally understand that, and I'm not sure I understand your comment. Perhaps we can talk off of it as somebody not having to work 40 hours.
Maybe Ms. Brandsred can...
Well, I can talk to her about it, or maybe you can explain it to me, but I'm concerned deeper.
It states in the policy that to be eligible for benefits, you have to work 35 hours on a regular basis.
Yeah, okay.
So, there's been questions if somebody is two hours short on their week.
No, it's a regular, just one week.
Do they have to use two hours of vacation?
No.
Or are they okay for that week with 38 hours?
Well, yeah, I don't know what, I mean, yeah, I, I mean, I...
That's just unpaid time.
Okay, we can't be talking over each other.
Yeah, well, I, I just, I, I guess that is, I mean, I don't understand why that was a question, that somebody doesn't want to take two hours and they got 38, and who cares? That's their call. I thought, but if somebody wants to be paid 40 hours, they might have to take the extra two hours.
The question comes because in our payroll book, it says, "An employee must work 40 hours." So we just want clarification on that.
Okay, well, that has nothing to do with this issue, then.
I think it comes down to the practice that we've all become accustomed to, and as the department heads, we were told many... as the department heads, we were told many, in a previous, somebody in a previous position instructed us that you are to work 40 hours a week, and if that needs, if you need to use sick leave or vacation to accomplish that, that's a must. We've all heard it.
Well, if it's previous...
Okay, wait, wait, we're going to get into just the back-and-forth argument, and that's what I'm trying to prevent here. Uh, we're going to do our best to listen to everybody, and so I, I'm going to ask that everyone, give everybody a chance to talk. Uh, typically I have the Commission talk at the very end and ask these questions. I'm finding it important, since there's a lot of questions coming up to us at once, to, I'm going to allow it after each speaker, but at the same time, we can't be just having bickering. This is a serious issue. And I'm, I'm, I'm really wanting to listen. I've gotten calls and I'm taking it very seriously. The decision has not been made, but with that said, this is a presentation, and we're trying to listen to everybody, and I'm trying to do this as fair as I possibly can, so which includes calling for order when we talk over each other. So that, that's got to stop. So, your time is almost up, Rhea Endon, and so if there's any questions to the points you've been given, I can't allow more time if I'm going to be fair to the rest of the group. So therefore, if there's questions to be addressed, I'm allowing the Commissioners, as well as Ms. Brandred, to answer some of those questions.
I hope you will note that we are not trying to be, we're not trying to bicker with anybody, we're legitimately trying to get answers to questions.
Yeah, I, and I'm, I'm fine with that, but I, what I'm trying to avoid is this is not an airing of grievances on all issues. This is about the PTO. Now, obviously, in any organization this size, people end up doing things by tradition, or it's one department head interprets something differently, and that maybe we need to clarify issues, and I'm fine with that, but I'm trying to distinguish here about, hey, is there a question, we need a clarification on hours here, which doesn't seem to have anything to do with PTO? And what I want to try to avoid is that this just becomes everybody talking about something besides PTO or adding everything that they've got issues with the county, and this should be restricted to the PTO discussion. Um, I do appreciate you bringing up that there needs to be some administrative issues. Anytime there's a plan, there needs to be administrative issues dealt with and how things or clarifications have to be done. Appreciate that, certainly those are in it, um, but I was just, I wasn't, I couldn't understand why the 40, the 38 versus 40, I don't see it has anything to do with the PTO, and I don't see that it has, but it needs to be clarified.
I, I will address the one-hour increment. So, uh, we have to track FMLA, intermittent FMLA, and an hour is the smallest increment tracking either of those two. Um, it's been four hours, but in intermittent FMLA, that can be a smaller amount, so one hour is the smallest that we will track. And that's not something that affects anybody except someone that's on FMLA and are tracking personally, or for HR.
So would it be possible that that's tracked separately?
I'm sorry, Rhea?
Would it be possible that that is, that is tracked in a separate manner?
Uh, no, it has to be according to our policy and what they can take time off. And, and according to our, the HR attorney we use, that's pretty small. That's the small she's seen. Usually it's two to four hours, partial day.
Just to, it wouldn't be nice to get a clarification as to whether that's an hour minimum?
It is an hour minimum.
And then can it go 15 after that?
I, I can ask, absolutely.
Okay, so that might be a way to...
That is a good point. There's a possibility we could...
But at this point, it was an hour.
Would anybody else like to speak?
Good morning, Kay Luther, Mead County Deputy State's Attorney. I would echo a lot of the concerns of my counterparts that have already spoke with you today. Like many others, I'm in a position where I have leave that would be impacted by this. And unlike, well, not unlike, excuse me, not unlike these, many of our other departments, we have also staffing issues. So one of my questions for the Commissioners is with the implementation or proposed implementation of this policy, if employees were to carry over that amount in hopes that we'd be able to take it, what happens when it is logistically not possible for the employees in the office to utilize that leave within the allocated time? Because I do think in our office, and there's a couple others that I can think of off the top of my head where I think that is legitimately not a possibility. My other question that I have is relating to current vacation. So I know when Mr. Cleberad spoke, he was combining his two, and I know when Ms. Brandred addressed him, she was inquiring about that, but with the PTO being capped at 240 hours, likewise, I have some serious concerns about that, because if you were to combine the two leaves that I have now, I'm sitting in that vicinity right now, so if we're accumulating new leave and we're having to use this old leave if we choose to carry it over so that we're getting paid for the time that we thought we were going to be paid under our present policy, and as a long-term employee of Mead County, what is that going to look like? It was very disheartening to see this appear seemingly at random on the agenda, so I, I joined Chief Jeopardy Johns and his concerns there. Had there been a previous time for comment, I certainly would have come and addressed the council, but I am glad that you are hearing us at this time. Likewise, I also am reluctant to put a lot of stock in a short-term disability policy that none of us have ever seen or know what the logistics of or what the qualification criteria are, to know if there's things about our families or about us that are going to exclude us from use of that. I can say, with the exception of one time, I can't think of a time when I've been out for 14 days, so the fact that it exists after 14 days, I think in the event of a catastrophic illness, it's probably something that might not be bad, but how often is that actually going to be used and is it truly a benefit over the things that we have come to rely on? I do think that this is something, and I would urge the Commissioners to consider seriously, looking at this as something that if you choose to implement it, and I do agree as to the legal status of leave, that you are able to, to take this action with sick leave, if you choose to do this, I would urge you to consider leaving the employees who are already here at our current status and implementing a change going forward. Along with the lines relating to the concern with staffing shortages and our opportunity to actually use this leave if we were to elect to carry it over, which I think the majority of us would rather do that if we absolutely have to make a choice under this current plan. It likewise seems when we talk about that this is to, to better manage taxpayers' funds, I honestly can't tell if this is a mechanism by which the Board is, is trying to reduce our workforce. I would look to our Treasurer and Auditor's Office and note that we are still, I think, suffering some of the loss of institutional knowledge that we previously had in that department. So I think when Deputy Rogers talks about some of the long-term employees that we have, and for our office, I can tell you that that is Mr. Cleberad. He is a very unique tool that we have had access to and an advisor to this council, typically. Thank you.
Is there anything that any of the Commissioners or Ms. Brandred would like to address that Ms. Luther brought up?
Those of you know, I've never been a quiet person. I want to say one thing, I, I, I took a few notes, and you wondered if this was a means of reducing our workforce. Actually, this is a means to increase our workforce. What people want nowadays is not necessarily what they had in the past. If you think it's easy right now to hire somebody and tell them they're only going to get one week vacation, they leave. They don't want a part of that. At the same token, for those people to get more than one week, they have to lie about being sick. Now, you deal with people who tell the truth or don't tell the truth your whole life. Not fair for somebody to have to say, "I'm sick because I want to be gone a little more." And if you think in this day and age, people are satisfied with only being gone one week, you're wrong. Times have changed. People want time off, and we're trying to be fair to people who've been here for six months, six years, or 16 years. Likewise, if you are a relatively new employee and you get sick, and you've had the flu or something in the past, and you've gone home, you may only have five, 10 days of sick leave. Most of you who are complaining have got more than 240 hours. Most people don't have that. When they get sick, we want them to be able to continue to pay their mortgage, to pay their car payments, to pay their other responsibilities. And this disability policy covers basically what you would get after all your other deductions are taken off. We have to look at the overall, what's fair for everyone, and if you are sick, you can get 880 hours, which is more than most of you can get now. Um, um, and yes, we do have to look at, you know, taxpayers too, but we're trying to be fair to all employees, and I'm sure as you talk some more, another thing that will happen. You all know I worked over there at the LEC. I can count the number of times somebody may have come in and they may have sounded like me and I said, "Oh, my God, how come you didn't stay home today?" Well, because there was a policy in effect that if you took a sick day prior to a Monday holiday, you got penalized or something. That's a jacked-up policy. If you're sick, you should be able to go home and not be penalized, depending upon when the next holiday falls. Overall, everybody will get more time off.
Okay, let's keep it to the issues that Ms. Luther brought up, so...
I thought I did.
Well, you kind of touched, you did, but then you went on, but, uh...
May I respond?
Uh, certainly, but keep it brief.
I agree that our new folks also need to have an opportunity to have leave. As a matter of fact, one of the people who I am here, um, and I wanted to make sure I was present in this meeting, is someone who has not been here for six years. As a matter of fact, he'll come in just under the wire, who is presently home with severe injuries on his leave, and he will, he will lose everything that he has under this plan. Because anybody who's been here less than six years doesn't get paid out anything. They lose, they lose it. So I don't think that that is a benefit to those individuals, and for the record, I'm not complaining about the possibility of change. I'm complaining and advocating for a revision of your proposed change, because Pennington County did something very similar, and a lot of their tenured people did leave, and they also thought that it was going to help them bring new people, and many of their departments are still suffering major staffing shortages, so I don't see that that happened.
Thank you, Ms. Luther.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to address something Ms. Luther brought?
Kay, I think you had a question on the carryover, um, and the carryover, if I had read that correctly, if you don't use the carryover hours at 240 hours in the two years, then you would lose that.
And...
I'm pretty sure that's how it's written.
And does that include then our current vacation? That was one of my kept questions, thank you.
So, I, I think it would be, you know, you would, I'm, you're here over 10 years, right?
Not quite.
Um, um, but I think you have your, your vacation time and then your carried-over sick time, so you'd have to use that sick time piece within, which is a lot of time to use in the next two years. I don't, I think it would be a loss for a lot of people.
Anybody else have something? Ms. Luther? Thank you, Ms. Luther. Anybody else want to speak?
Good morning, Nathan Jagom, Mead County Highway Department and Wheaton Pest. Um, everybody has pretty much touched on a lot of the topics that I have on here. Uh, myself, I'm obviously a senior employee, so I would advocate for the senior employees, but we also have a lot of young staff at our department, and so one of my questions was how we decided to cut off at the six years, um, because as Ms. Luther just stated, there are employees who have been here close to that six-year mark, and even the employees who have only been here for a year or two have accrued this benefit of sick leave that it's going to be taken away from them and they're not going to be able to use that benefit. So I don't know why we're drawing a line at six years of service for those who receive this benefit and those who don't. So, um, that was just one of my questions that I would ask, and, um, unlike, um, James Johns who was able to eloquently express his feelings, I just saw this yesterday morning, so I did not have time to review much, so I apologize, and I'm just going to add a couple of bullet points of things that I would like to see if, if this is amended or, um, able to be worked shop through, you know, a, a working group of department heads. Um, our highway department being one of the larger departments along with the Sheriff's Department, this will, you know, definitely affect us, probably a little bit harder than, than some of the other departments that aren't as large, so, um, I have a real, you know, I, I would like to be involved or have somebody from our department be involved if there is some, um, changes that are made. Um, I agree, um, with some of the policy and some of that, but at this point, I just can't fully support that. I look at the FMLA that provides it for up to 12 weeks and use that as a standpoint of I would like to see an accrual, um, of 480 hours total, um, just for a family, like that was stated, that might be having a new child to get their full pay for the 12 weeks that is allotted, um, would be a huge benefit for a young family instead of taking a reduced payment, um, you know, by utilizing the policy if, if the, um, the short-term disability policy even applies to new families. I'm not sure if it does or not. Um, the carryover, again, um, I think, I was, I had a question about that, but obviously I think that's been stated, it's at 240 hours, because when I read the policy, it looked like it was 40, but I, I've heard since that it's been clarified that it's 240. So, um, the last thing that I will say is, um, you know, this, this policy I think has been, has been devised to rule out abuse of the policy, or abuse of the sick leave policy, um, but what about some of those who have not abused the policy? And I don't feel like they're being significantly compensated for the hard work and time that they have put into this county and the years of service that they have obviously given to be paid out at minimum wage to me is, just leaves a, a tough feeling in my stomach for somebody who has dedicated a lot of their time and effort to the county and has this large accrual of, of sick leave, because they've come to work every day and put in their time, and then to have that rewarded by getting paid out at minimum wage, I just question how we got to that number instead of a different number. So, that's all I have, thank you.
Anybody have anything for Mr. Jagom?
Uh, yeah, so the six year comes from the policy, the current policy.
Okay.
So, that, that was the payout, and the current handbook policy was if you were here six years and you got paid out your, your time.
Okay.
That's where that number came from. Uh, it, on the policy, the current handbook states if you had 100 hours of sick time, you got paid for that.
A percentage?
Yeah, over six years. That's where we took that number from.
Good.
And, and Nathan, the, the way we came up with the, um, minimum wage was we looked around, and a lot of firms and companies, including the federal government, you get nothing if you have thousands of hours of sick leave. You get nothing. And we felt you deserve something. We also kept in mind how fortunate sick leave is there for people who get sick, and how fortunate we are as human beings, for those of us who've never had to use it. How thankful we are. If, if we need it, it's there. Most of the firms in Mead County that pay the highest property tax don't give any sick leave for any of their employees. And we're, we're just, we're trying to be absolutely as, as fair as possible. And wanted if you had a, a real illness, you would get, you, you, if, if you're not paying Medicare, Social Security in your retirement, what that disability policy is paying is almost exactly what your take-home would be. And so we wanted, we wanted that, and we wanted to be able to give all employees more options, more coverage, more sustainability if they got sick. And I might add, we did something else too that we had just learned about recently, and that was, we put everyone on an ambulance, air ambulance policy. We did not know, you know, life flights flying all over the country anymore. I think Monument is using it as a cash flow thing, but whatever it is, it's huge. Mead County is a rural county. We didn't know that no regular life insurance policy covers you much at all for that. My, our, our health policy. And that it can cost twenty-five, fifty, sixty thousand dollars that to get to the, to get to the hospital. And then to get a bill like that. We didn't want our employees to be faced with that kind of problem. So that's why, again, without, we did not confer with any employees. We just automatically did it because we thought it was right and just and fair.
Absolutely, and I appreciate it. That's an added benefit that you have. And I just feel like this is a benefit that they're potentially losing. So I would ask you to defer your decision until it can be workshopped a little bit more, or at least, you know, discussed. Like I said, a lot of the employees, this is the first time they're seeing or hearing this. So, um, this is all brand-new information for a lot of people, and I think it's, it would be nice to, to be able to use that.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Jagum. Yeah, again, we got a policy, we're looking at a policy. Um, um, so let's, let's, as Mr. Commissioner Wayzorick pointed out, let's try to keep comments from all of us as well to the, to the policy, so...
I'm Julie Urbannick, and I work for the Mead County Sheriff's Office. Um, I'm one of those employees that the six-year cutoff would affect. And, um, as the spouse of someone who's currently going through a medical issue, um, if he gets sick in January, I have no sick leave to go take care of him. So, um, what am I supposed to do? My, my disability, if, if this policy, if we get this policy, I don't, I don't get paid for two weeks, at least. Um, what am I supposed to do?
Uh, is, in, this, this in no way, I guess that's a question, 'cause some of this keeps getting brought up. Are, are you done, Mr. Urbannick?
I mean, it's just a question I guess I have for you.
Right, good question, Julie.
So, yeah, if, if you can continue, if you're done, I'll answer that. Or I, I, that's a question pertaining to that.
Mm-hmm.
This, this in no way affects the sick bank that we, we current... Okay, there'll be no sick bank, I have this in?
So the PTO is a larger accrual every pay period?
But if something happens, he's currently going through this.
It's sick and, you can use it for anything you want. Sick, vacation, all of the above. Um, it just depends on what your need is. So it's for you to choose. It's not us telling you, "This is just for vacation, this is just for sick."
But I don't, I won't have any. But I don't have any, right? Because it's, it'll be accruing. I'm losing all my sick leave, though, right?
I'm sorry, Julie, I, I don't think I understand your question. What do you mean you don't have any?
I'm losing all my sick leave 'cause I'm under six years, right?
Okay.
So I won't have any sick leave. And I have very few vacation hours.
Uh, we're all at a different place with, with our sick hours. Even, um, 'cause we're talking about forty-one people, um, currently that qualify for the six-plus years. It's forty-one people. I just kinda wanna state that. The rest of us, me including you, yes, our sick hours would be forfeited. So you're saying I would have no sick hours. But your PTO hours would begin with the first pay period of the new year at whatever qualifying, uh, I think you would be at the four-point... Sorry.
But, but the sick hours I have now, I haven't used them, I haven't abused them, I have them now.
Right, yes. It would be the same for myself as well. They would be removed, they would be forfeited, and we would just start with what we have currently in our vacation, would be carried into PTO, and then we would start accruing on top of that. That is how this policy is currently prepared, yes.
I guess I just don't feel this...
Okay, good.
Thank you, Ms. Urbannick. Anybody wanna address anything? Thank you, Ms. Urbannick. Anybody else like, wish to speak?
Morning. Um, I am also one of the, we'll call them junior employees. I've been here for four and a half years. Just shy.
Please announce yourself.
Oh, my name is Max Ruck. I'm part of the planning department. Um, this was my first job out of school. I've been here for four and a half years. You all know me by now. Um, I have been saving up my sick time. I go to my appointments during lunch hour because in the new year, my husband is having surgery. Um, we would like to start a family. I have been budgeting this like it's money, like it's a budget. And to have it took away with no notice and with no ability to plan ahead is brutal. It is brutal to us. Um, so I guess I can let those of us who have been around more, longer, um, talk on the benefits of this policy change. I'm honestly kind of in favor of having PTO instead of sick and vacation. But this transition is, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna really impact some of us that have been here more than, or have been here less than that six years. I don't think that my last four and a half years have been less dedicated or less worthwhile than anybody else here. I work very hard. Um, I am, I am asking for, if this policy goes through, whatever iteration of it goes through, whatever y'all do, please just give us that option to roll over those sick hours. Um, I haven't had time to prepare for that. I didn't know that this policy was changing until Saturday night. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Ruck. Anybody have anything to address, Ms. Ruck? Anybody else wish to speak?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm on the other end of the...
Could you please identify yourself?
Oh, sorry, I'm Kim Nelson. I work at the Mead County Jail. I have been at the jail for eleven years. I have six hundred and eighty-one hours built up of sick leave. Like some of my fellow, um, Mead County employees, I was saving up in case the big C attacks me later on. I also was hoping to give sick leave to any of my fellow employees that needed it in the future. I understand that you're looking at bringing new employees into the county. You wanna give them items that will entice them to come to work here. In the eleven years, I've seen many people come because we've changed policies to get them to come to work for Mead County. But I've also seen a lot of them leave, like within just training time. I also was here when Jerry Durr's time was, where if you were sick, but then you did overtime later on, you did not get that time, that overtime. I just, I, I'm not a very good speaker. I'm better at talking with inmates than, um, regular people. But, um, I just wanted to address you, ask you if you'd please just consider this before you vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Anybody have anything for Ms. Nelson? Anybody else wish, wish to speak?
Can I just make one?
Certainly.
And I'm, I'm gonna have to look up this sheriff thing. I'll talk to Mr. Johns later. But just so everybody understands is that if you work, if you take an eight-hour vacation and work forty hours under the federal law, you're not working overtime because it counts hours. So that's the policy that exists, has existed for this, and that's the reason. Not illegal, that's, that's, federal law allows you to work that way. The way the county counts it. Um, and that's how we counted it under Durr, and I don't think we've changed that. So I, it's not illegal, it's, it's, but federal law says you can do. So I just wanna make that clarification, 'cause it's been said twice.
Certainly. Thank you, Commissioner Wayzorick.
I'm Deputy Jenny Ness. Um, I have worked for both the jail and now as a deputy. Um, so under this current, um, transition, my current vacation hours would go away as well as this, our sick. Is that right?
Your vacation hours transferred into the PTO accrual.
And then we'll start accruing.
Yes, on top of that.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so with the, uh, short-term disability plan, okay? I have absolutely no details on it. I don't understand how it works. We've not seen anything for it. Um, so it's a benefit for up to eleven weeks of illness, is that correct?
Yes, this, the plan that we are looking at, yes.
Okay, but it doesn't start until you've been sick for fourteen days?
Uh, it's not sick for fourteen days. It has a fourteen-day wait, yes. Usually, um, I'm not a medical provider, so I'm just gonna say this in kind of the terms that have been explained to me.
Mm-hmm.
If you had an illness or a surgery or something that you were planning to do, or not, um, you would get a letter from your medical provider saying, "I need three weeks off, two weeks off, six weeks off" to take care of this particular situation.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, short-term disability would cover you after the first fourteen, there would be a fourteen-day wait period, yes.
Okay, so if I had to fly to Sioux Falls with my daughter again, say we were already under this new plan, how would that work? Would I not be able to use any benefits? Or what would that look like for me for that first fourteen days?
You mean take, you would take fourteen days off from work? Is that what you're saying?
Right. I've, I've had to life-flight my daughter to Sioux Falls twice. Um, so if I had to fly out tomorrow and pretend we're under this plan already...
I see.
I've lost all my sick time, right? Yes, I would.
You, um, are you, have you been here six years, Jill?
No.
You haven't, okay.
Well, if, if you're on my list. So, just, assuming I don't, my sick time doesn't roll over, okay? And I was starting fresh. Say January second, I have to fly to Sioux Falls. I've lost my sick time, okay? Would I have to use my vacation time? And if you guys want us to have more time off for a better work-life balance, if I'm in Sioux Falls with my daughter for a couple weeks and I don't qualify for the short-term disability, then I'm not able to take that needed vacation time for the, my mental health, right? It doesn't, I don't understand how having sick and vacation together makes for a better work-life balance and having to use your vacation to compensate for a sick episode. Because the short-term disability doesn't cover for everything. So if I'm in Sioux Falls for a week, it doesn't, it doesn't fall under a short-term disability.
Not, not for your daughter, for you.
Right.
It's for the employee. You have health insurance, or you have the option for health insurance for your family, right?
Right.
Okay, okay. Let's go back. So PTO is personal time off. It's not sick, it's not vacation.
Right.
It's personal time off, you, paid time off. However you wish to use your paid time off?
I understand that.
Okay, all right.
But if I'm using my time and I have to use it for a sick, a sick incident...
Mm-hmm.
Then how is that, you're taking away my vacation time, my time, you, do you see how the...
But your accrual would be larger than what you currently have now. So, um...
Okay, be quiet in the back, please. We, let, again, we, when people, we're, we're trying to listen to all this, so, sorry, Ms. Ness, I just...
So, yeah. So for instance, the last time...
Your accrual is larger now in its every pay period. It would be every pay period, so you would have a larger accrual to use from versus, uh, well, if you're a new hire, you have three point three-four hours a month. Um, if you've been here up to four years, you've had six point six-seven hours. Uh, going to the new plan, you'd have six point one-five hours every two weeks. So your accrual is larger, and you would have more time in your PTO.
But it's capped at two forty?
At two forty, yes, uh-huh. It, it is now as well. Vacation is capped at two forty.
Mm-hmm. Well, it... Um... He is. But, um, she does have health issues, her concerns. So a flight to Sioux Falls is something that is very, you know, could be very likely. Um, but that would, that would end up taken away. You know, having that ability, 'cause I've been able to save my sick time for those instances. The first time I flew her to Sioux Falls, I didn't have the sick time availability. The second time I did, um, and I was able to use my sick time. But we were there for so long, I had to use vacation time as well.
Coming up on your time, do you have some other points you'd like to make?
Nope. I just wanted to see how that, you say you want it to benefit your work and personal life and mental health, you know? But it doesn't really, if you're using all your time for sick stuff, then...
You've made some good points, I think.
Okay.
I, I'm definitely gonna take into consideration what you and Julie have said.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ness. Anybody else wanna speak?
Hi, I'm Terry Jo. I'm with Dispatch. I've been with Mead County for approximately nine years. So I'm not politically correct, so I apologize for that. Been up all night as well. So our sick leave that we have now is capped at six hundred and forty hours. Right now, mine is well over five hundred. I have taken, in the time I've been here, maybe thirty hours of sick time, so I don't use it. My vacation, I give back to the county on a regular basis because of staffing issues. Not a big deal, I'm okay with it. It caps at two hundred and forty. So yes, we are going to be losing time. I understand what everybody's saying, that you're not, and you're gonna get more, but you're not. So my other thing is, when you have your sick bank, and they're separate, then if you have a, a family illness, it might be my husband, it might be my husband's mom, it might be somebody on that side. I don't have to worry about my parents, they're both gone. But I would be able to take my sick time to help out with that. And I understand the, um, short-term disability, but in the end, that doesn't pay what our sick time does. And that doesn't, isn't feasible for some people, especially people who are single. I am not, but, and my husband just works full-time as well. But the plan that you're trying to implement is not fair. It's not, it's not fair to the employees that have been here... It's not, it's not fair to the employees that have been here, nor to the employees that are coming up on their six years. And, yes, I do agree that there probably needs to be a little more vacation for the new people, which I do believe was in our union contract. Um, however, the people who have been here and given dedication and loyalty to the county deserve to keep what they've earned.
Anybody wanna address, Terry Jo? Thank you, Ms. Ness. Anybody else wish to speak?
My name is Lana Anderson, I'm the Register of Deeds. Um, I'm an elected official, so I fall in a completely different category, where none of my time is capped. Um, my time off is kept, I kinda go by my conscience. Let that be my guideline, in which I believe I've never, ever abused that. Um, but at the end of the day, I think that people just wanna be treated fairly, and I think by this roomful of people, they don't feel like they're being treated fairly.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Anybody else wish to speak?
John Olson, Senior Praiser. Um, I just wanna state that, you know, I share some of the sentiment with some of these other folks who have family members or spouses that they caretake for. Um, I understand their concerns with this, you know, the, the short-term disability does nothing for your spouse, if your spouse, or you have a family member, it's strictly for the employees, my understanding correct? Is that correct, Deborah?
It's the employee.
Yes.
Short-term disability...
So, you know, as we retire the sick leave bank, those, I mean, I'm not a person that has hundreds of hours, I think I have fifty hours on the books, because I use my sick leave, this is required to, for me to take care of my wife. It keeps being stated over and over that we will accrue more by going to this new PTO, which, that's simply not a fact. And, you know, I have, right now, if you clue what my sick leave and my vacation is now, it was stated by Mr. Clubrad, as I'm in the same boat, you know, I lose one point two nine hours per month on this new PTO. And for someone who's using this a lot, as we move forward, I will waste most of my leave to help take care of my wife, instead of having vacation time. Now, I'm gonna accrue more, gonna accrue less.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Anybody else?
Alexis Stevens, I work at the jail. I just have one quick clarification that I want. Um, it was, oh, my goodness, sorry. Oh, okay. It was mentioned earlier that if you leave before December twenty-second, and took your sick leave with you, that you would be paid out at your current value, but if you take the rollover amount, it would only be the minimum wage, and I wanted to know why that was.
Anybody wanna address that, Ms. Brandru?
Um, currently, um, we, we use December twenty-second, because it's the last day of the twenty twenty-four pay period, okay? So, this is where this date comes from, if anybody's asking that question. So, that is kind of where we would begin a new accrual, and a, a new start, okay? Not saying it couldn't start somewhere else next year, that, nothing is impossible, right? But, uh, so this is where these dates came from, and we have to have some dates to start from, right? And, and this is the first time you're seeing, this is the first time for a public discussion. This is the first time to introduce it. So, um, you know, I, I appreciate the comments. Um, so, you're saying if someone takes it, so if a person is thinking, and there may be people thinking of retiring, we, we have a, a few right now, that have turned in their retirement earlier, uh, this quarter. Um, we would honor, as the handbook currently says, because the policy would be changing, um, as, once the policy is approved, or changed, and then approved, whichever, however it rolls out after today, um, but, uh, that is why that date is in there. Um, and we would honor what the current handbook says, and that's based on the twenty-second. Now, if that date changed maybe to a different date, obviously, I think we'd probably do the same, but that's up to the commission.
It just, it seems like it's more beneficial to, for people to leave, and take their sick leave with them, than to keep employees, because they would be paid less, is the way it seems.
Well, the, the employees that, there, the forty-one employees that have, that this, this really affects the most, uh, because they've been here longer than six years, they do have an opportunity, over two years, to use those two hundred and forty hours at their current rate of pay, um, however they would like, not just for sick.
But, we are short-staffed, and you can't always afford to take the time, so that's...
That's a different issue, but, um, we're just talking about that.
Commissioner Wazorek.
Yeah, I'd like to make a point, is that, you asked why it's lower rate, you get paid now, you don't have, I mean, you know, a lot of these, a lot of this is, you'd take the two forty, it was capped, so you didn't get paid for all of it, it's always been capped. And if people quit and go to something else, and if they qualified, they get paid some of their, paid them some of their sick leave. But, you know, people that wanna keep their job, wanna like working here, as part of their career, have long-term plans, they're actually gonna get the money right now.
Right.
Which is different than getting it fifteen years from now, or twenty years from now. So, yeah, or if, God forbid, they get hit by a car, you know, whether they get any of it. So, um, so that, that's why it's a lower amount, because it doesn't, you don't have to have a change of employment, but you get to take the money now.
But none of us make minimum wage either.
Well, yeah, but that's, we said it, that number, I mean, you know, as, been acknowledged by Mr. Clubrad, we could've just said, "You don't get anything." And frankly, frankly, there should, there's, right now, the plan calls for a payment of something, without, with, you know, it's just, uh, that you get paid some of it, at this point, without having to change your circumstances of your job.
Some people would rather choose that, though, is what I'm saying. It seems like it's more of a benefit for people to leave and take the money than...
You know, everybody's gonna make, people, people have to make their choices on it, I, you know, I understand that. Um, but, that's where we're at, and frankly, get the money, bird in hand, tune in the bushes, the old saying goes. Um, so, but that's why that rate's lower, because you get it today, not fifteen years from today.
Well, the rate would be higher if you get it today.
Ms. Stevens, your, your question was, what was the logic behind that? And, and I think Commissioner Wazorek answered that, is that, would that, is that fair to say? I know there's, you do have some disagreements with that, and we are listening to that, but I, I think the question was answered, is that fair to say? Do you have another question, or comment? So, thank you, Ms. Stevens. Anybody else?
My name is Kathy Rice. Um, I'm currently the elect, uh, representative for District Twenty-nine, and for Meade County. And my question is, why did you have to do this policies, without considering our payroll, our, our Sheriff Department, our big employees here, without, with doing this in secret, without them knowing, or not being, um, uh, transparent in this policy, so you can, guys can come together and give a good policy that's really fair for our, our people here in Meade County?
Any, anyone wanna address Ms. Rice? You have any other questions, Ms. Rice?
No, I just think, you know, transparency would've taken a lot of this uncertainty out, if you were really thinking you were helping the people. And we just need to make sure we're, we're working with the people here in Meade County, when they, when you change policies.
Fair statement, and again, this policy is not passed yet, but...
Well, I know, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that you do.
Right. Anybody else wish to speak?
My name's Paul Whitcraft, I'm Deputy Sheriff with Meade County Sheriff's Office, I'm also the union representative. I'm just gonna read a statement from the union. Um, this is just for the, um, a statement for the county employees that are covered under the collective bargaining agreement. Um, the, per the terms of the contract, a minimum thirty-day notice must be provided for such changes, unless deemed an emergency, and this situation does not meet the criteria for an emergency. There's also current language that refers to the vacation, sick, and personal time. There's no mention of a PTO in this collective bargaining agreement. Uh, these changes cannot be made unilaterally to the two groups under collective bargaining agreements. So, we formally request that, uh, like everybody said, Commissioner Dearing, that considering, uh, talks down the road to address this issue that the union brings to you today.
Anybody wanna address Mr. Whitcraft? Thank you, Mr. Whitcraft. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Walter Zirker, I'm with, uh, the Highway Department, and I'm representing with the union also. And same thing he just brought up, there was no mention of this, and it kinda seems like this was done in secret. All of a sudden, this is a big change to everyone, and it seems like you just sprung it upon everyone. And I've heard a lot about being fair, well, what about the four-year, five-year employee? He came, he's here, or she, they were planning on this. This is part of their, you know, outlook, and you just took it away. There's not even a payout. Why not? Why not give them a payout, at least? You know, on that time, they've been here. You guys are just changing rules without input from them. They put in time, and that's about all I wanna add.
Thank you, Mr. Zirker. Anybody else have anything for Mr. Zirker?
I, I do wanna make a comment, because, Walter, you're one of the people that brought this up to me a couple months ago. Um, I have noted in my HR report, and truly, nobody probably wants to read it, they're pretty boring, but, um, I have noted in there that the vacation and sick policy has been reviewed since, I think, September. So, it's not a complete surprise that we haven't been looking at this, and I know you came to my office, I think personally, and asked about it. So, um, we have been looking at it for quite some time, uh, so it's, it's not...
You have not gotten back to me, or the union?
Well, I don't really have anything to talk about on it, other than we were reviewing it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Zirker. Anybody else? Anybody else wish to speak to this? Anybody else wish to speak? I'll ask one more time, if anyone else would wish to speak before I close public testimony. Uh, I'll give you a brief minute, Ms. Ness, I typically don't allow people to come back.
So, why? Why the change? And if it's to save money, where does that money go?
Thank you. Anybody?
Yeah, so, you know, the, the policy that we have, the, I mean, everybody that's been here knows this policy, and they're comfortable with this policy. Um, I, I come from the other side of the world, where I have this policy. I come from the PTO side, um, and I have had to use my short-term disability, had knee surgery, uh, I had my vacation time, I used it. Um, I get to use my, my PTO for, every day, every Tuesday coming down here. Um, and it, for me, the, the industry standard is that PTO, uh, version, um, and it, it does, I know for the, the people that have been here for more than ten years, it doesn't seem quite as fair. For the people that are here, under the ten-year version, um, it is, it does seem better to them. Um, I know that, you know, taking away the cost of, of the two hundred and forty hour of, of, you know, bank time for you guys, um, to get paid out, it, it could've gone either way. It could've gone no pay, it could've gone, you know, full pay, uh, we tried to pick a number in the middle. Um, so, for me, this is not an easy conversation. I, I did, I dreaded this in the last six years, okay? So, uh, I've, I've been here for six years as commission, and this conversation has been in the commission since I've been here. So, whether or not this is a good policy or not, the, the way that it was, uh, the way that it currently sits, it, it's, it's antiquated, it just doesn't work for everybody. Um, some people, it works good for the new one, um, but it doesn't work for the others, and, and I get that. We have to, you know, draw the line somewhere, and I think that's, that's kinda where we're at on this. Um, and, and that's, I guess that's kinda the timing for me, is, I mean, I've been, been here for a while on this one, and, um, Deborah has put a ton of work in reviewing, you know, other places around the state, how we, how other counties have transitioned into the PTO side. Um, some, you know, some of the companies, they didn't pay out, so, there's, there's those types of things, um, and I, and I understand, for, for you, and for John, you know, those types of things, it, it's a huge impact, if you have to use your time, um, and, and you don't have that short-term policy, that's gonna, it, it may not help you, you know? Um, and I, and I get that. So, I don't know what to say to make those things better, um...
I just was looking for, um, you know, with the school, we're doing a, a big change with the safety programs and stuff, and using a new app, and it's, it's easier for, to train the teachers, and to show the teachers the benefit of this big change, if they know the end goal, and can see the big picture. I guess, I don't know what the big picture is, or what the end goal is, for the county. Not, I mean, not me personally, but as far as the county, is it a financial, financially based? Is that, we're saving money here to put money there?
This, yeah, this, this, this question could, could go on all day, but, I don't...
I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, no, no, I understand your question, I understand your concern, but Commissioner Wazorek could be like to address that.
I'm just gonna give you a short, hopefully, short, um, so, multiple offices here are asking for more FTEs. We have roads in the county that are falling apart, that we can't afford to fix. We have all these things going on, so, it's very difficult to say, "I'm gonna take a dollar here and go here," because we scramble every year trying to make our budget work. You know, Ms. Rice was here, and the county's very restricted how it can raise money, and, and we don't have enough, provide the services a lot of people are demanding here. Now, and then, on top of that, you know, costs have gone way up, you know, we have, we have a road that went from what we thought was gonna be like two to three million, now was like six to seven, rebuild, that needs to be rebuilt. So, you know, wages have screamed up, we've tried to keep up with wages. There's more pressure on the Sheriff's Office, there's more pressure on other offices, because we get this growth, and it's a part of the county, so we're trying to add FTEs. So, this, when we start looking around, I would echo Rich, this system of the heavy payout of sick leave, you just don't see anywhere. And I don't know why it was done this way, it preexists, I think, everybody here, um, it doesn't make sense long-term, the PTO system seems to be more efficient, that's what people are looking at. So, you looked at, might've changed these plans, and I would also echo Rich, is every time you make a change on a policy, there's somebody that it doesn't favor, and there's somebody that it does. But you can't make a separate policy for every individual, so you try to balance that. And, you know, I, you, there's been some good comments here today, I've made some notes, I, I think, I think we need to move forward, and work on this, and I think we need, but I think we need to get it in place, but, I, I'm never, I'm, I'm just gonna tell you, there's always gonna be somebody out there, whenever we make a policy up here, who's gonna be a bit out down the shorter end of the stick than somebody else. You've got very unique circumstances, it's not, it's gonna hit you harder, um, somebody else who doesn't have those circumstances, it's maybe beneficial.
It adds a little sugar to the medicine, if I know how it's benefiting us as a county long-term.
And I, I'm telling you, I'm, go ask your sheriff, how many times he's been here asking for FTEs, and multiple more vehicles, and everything else. I mean, the, the budget of the Sheriff's Office has increased dramatically.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, I mean, there's a lot of expenses out there, and, um, and this hits close to home. Nobody likes to look somebody in the, in the eyes. Yeah, you're gonna have to eat this a little bit, but at the same time, you gotta look at a balance. Yeah, you're going to have to eat this a little bit, but at the same time, you've got to look at a balance. These are hard decisions and, as I said, if I could wave them on to make a policy that benefited everybody, I could. But there's always somebody who's an outlier, somebody who's going to get hit by it. And so it's, you just, you try to find the balance.
Thanks, Ms. Ness.
I want to add to that. I'm really not sure the county's going to be saving any real significant amount of money. And the reason I say that is, is because most everybody is going to be getting more leave under the PTO than they were under the other. Granted, John pointed out he's going to be down 12 hours in a year. Well, I'm sorry about that, but that's assuming we do it that way. Carrie Jo mentioned, she has not been able to take all of her leave time. We are hoping to change that because we're authorizing hiring two more dispatchers. So you can take your time off.
It's on the agenda.
Okay. It's on the agenda. But it has been, you know, discussed and so we are doing that. We want to be able to decrease, we want to increase the availability of employees to be able to take time off. And you've got the problem not only in dispatch, but also COs. And one reason we've had trouble hiring COs is the one-week vacation. You know, times have changed. So we're doing what we can in order to facilitate current employees being able to use their time. That makes sense.
Does anyone else want to speak?
Cindy Swinby, and as you all know, I am one of the three that is retiring after the first of the year. I have seen many changes in 22 years as Rhea has and a few of us that have been here for a very long time. The PTO could be a great thing. I don't understand why when Rich is talking about fairness, Talbot is talking about how someone gets a short end of the stick. To me, this doesn't have to be a short end of the stick. Whatever you have for vacation, whatever you have for sick leave, rolls over to the PTO for everyone. No cutoff, there's no reason to have a cutoff. It all rolls over to the PTO. If you want them to use the vacation, then let them use the vacation for two years. It doesn't matter whether you're here two weeks or you're here for 33, 36 years. It does not matter. It should be the same for everyone straight across the board. If you're trying to get new employees here, you have no idea where the policies have changed since I've been here for 22 years. Very much, we have lost four holiday pays. And it seems like the employees are the ones that keep getting hit. So if you want to be fair, just take it, roll it all over into PTO. They can use it however they need to. And if you want the sick leave to be done separately, leave it at the 240 hours for everyone. No six years, no, none of that.
I don't recall us ever having 14 days of holiday pay.
I didn't say we had 14 days of holiday pay. We've lost four holidays, not days, four holidays.
Okay, but you got something in return. You got a different holiday.
No, we didn't.
Okay, again, we're going back, we're discussing the PTO's plan.
So the PTO is, can be a great thing. It's awesome that you can use it for whatever you need it for. I do not, however, agree that Deborah should be the one that has the final say. It should be the department heads. They know us, they work with us every day. And that's my thoughts. Although it's not going to affect me one way or the other. But I do want you guys to know that the long-term employees are feeling like you guys do not and have not appreciated us. And I know from talking to some of you that is not the case, but that is how it's feeling. So I think if you guys have it in your power right now to show us that you're not doing that, I hope you reconsider and you take the PTO, create it, roll all of it over and let them use it for the 240 days.
Thank you, Ms. Swinby. Anybody else wish to speak? Anybody else wish to speak?
My name is Carmen Salting and I'm with the Register of Deeds. If you want to do this, that's fine, but I think you ought to postpone it. You should have talked to the head, the department heads, and got their opinions and have them talk to their employees and then brought it back to you. Because everybody's feeling, again, I'll reiterate, you all did it behind our backs and then you just threw it at us. And we have a few days to decide what we want to do. That's not enough time. You need to give us more time and you need to talk about this and like Cindy said, make it more fair. And I think by talking to the department heads and you all sitting down together and having a few meetings about this, this could come together and this could be a good thing, but not the way it is now. It's totally unfair.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else? Anybody else before I close public testimony on this? Okay, go ahead, real quick.
So the only place in here I understand that HR is, is if you take requests more than three consecutive days for a health issue, it is to the supervisor and HR. There's nowhere HR has a final say on anything. It's your supervisor and HR. On a health issue, that's, you need more than three days off. If I missed something, share it.
Okay, anybody else before I close? Okay, you have gotten your time though, Mr. Yegum, so real quick.
In the policy, it says abusive paid time off policies may lead to...
It's in there now.
Thank you. Yep, thank you. I've seen that as well, so that's something we'll visit about. Anybody else wish to speak before I close public testimony? I will close public testimony on this item. That means commissioners only can speak. Commissioners, or if a commissioner asks you a question and brings somebody up, that's allowed as well. But commissioners, comments, questions?
My only thought was, you know, taking the public testimony unless we got questions for people. Maybe we need to continue this because we've got two hearings that we're supposed to do at 10:00.
Nope.
That are still sitting. We can continue it to, back to where it was originally on the agenda.
I, we can certainly, we can certainly do that, yes.
I'll make a motion that, as close to public testimony, that we move this back to where it was on the agenda so we can go get to the public hearing. And then Deborah, if this motion passes, I'd have a couple of questions for you that you can maybe run down before we get to it.
I'll second that.
Motion to second on the floor is to postpone discussion on this agenda item until later in the agenda when it comes back up. That's going to be, after his eye, so after the auditor speaks. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing non, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. So we'll go on now to the...
Can we get a five-minute break to maybe use the restroom or something?
Oh gosh, no, I'm ready to roll. Yeah, we'll take about a 10-minute break.
I don't think our clock works over there.
No, it doesn't. It's been eleven o- oh, now it's noon.
It's ten afternoon, yeah. I think it will already needs to be reset.
Uh, let's skip down to, uh, um, our ten o'clock hearings. Uh, liquor li- F one, uh, liquor license renewals, uh, continued from November twelfth.
Morning. Erin Cox, Deputy County Audit- County Auditor. Um, since the last meeting, we have received applications from Shooting Star, Reno's Casino and Kickstands. All of their taxes have in- are current and their fees have been paid. The only one we have not received any documentation for is Dixie Feeds.
Is who?
The Dixie Feeds and holding.
Okay. Has anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? Anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? Anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? Not I will close public testimony on this item as commissioners, uh, questions, comments.
So Dixie Feeds, that's a liquor license?
Mm-hmm. It's a twenty twenty-five renewal application for next.
Off sale, on sale?
It is for on sale, I believe.
On sale hard liquor? Yeah. Um... But otherwise, applications for Reno's Casino, Shooting Star.
And Kickstands.
So Reno's Casino, there's two applications because of different types of alcohol?
Yes. The Reno's Casino has a retail on-sale liquor license and they have a package off-sale liquor.
And no complaints that you're not aware of from either?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. Oh, I'll make a motion to approve the renewals of Reno Casino, both licenses and Shooting Star's license.
I'll second.
Talking about Dixie?
Uh, nobody's necessarily been informed. We've- we've- I think we decided as- as the commission that we weren't going to give out notices, so I don't think anybody's been informed.
I'm not talking about that.
That's an issue for the board, not the auditor's office. If it comes in late to the auditor, statutorily they shall present to the board. And when and if you choose to consider is up to the board. So I'm just trying to take the heat off of her.
I'm not doing anything to feed on it.
Hey, yeah, I don't think- I don't think Ms. Cox can answer that. I guess because like I said, it was- the auditor's office has been told not to send out notifications simply because we don't know where to start. And I understand, you understand that, but you keep asking Ms. Cox that question. So therefore, um, I- I don't know if- we don't know. I guess I- I'll help you, Ms. Cox, and say I don't think we know if they're aware because it-
So can-
Go ahead, Mr.-
Uh, point of order, can we just dispose of the motion and then maybe talk about Dixie's after that?
Yeah, that'd be fine. Yes. That- that we- we should be discussed. We do have a motion second. Thank you for point of order. Uh, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. So discussion on that motion, that is to, uh, approve the liquor license for Reno's Casino and what was the other one?
Shooting Star.
In Shooting Star.
Uh, both liquor licenses for Reno's.
Both- both liquor licenses for Shooting Star. So that is the motion.
No, no, both for Reno's and one for Shooting.
Okay. As long as the auditor has that correct, I think we're fine.
Kickstands, I don't know if that was.
The chair is confused here. Kickstands is in too?
Yep.
Okay. So you want to amend your motion?
You need- might need to change your motion.
Yeah, I guess I'm sorry. I was looking at what was posted. I didn't see that Kickstands was posted.
So since this was put in the agenda, we received Kickstands on Friday.
Actually, Kickstands is in the agenda.
It is, oh.
Yes.
Yeah. It's listed, but it- it's not attached, applications? I don't see that the application is attached. That was going off the-
So would you like to include Kickstands within your motion, Commissioner Moizoric? Or would you like to make a separate motion or would you like to move on?
Well, let me add on Kickstands. So we've got a full application in.
Hmm.
Um...
Are you Kickstand in the back there?
Okay. And?
We can do them separate as well.
Yeah, let's just pass what I've done so far.
Okay. So motion and second on the floor to pass, uh, both for Reno's Casino and Shooting Star. Uh, any discussion to that motion?
Do I?
Commissioner Creed, any other comments to this motion? Any other comments to this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
A secretary note that Commissioner Creed voted no. Uh, brings us to Kickstands if you'd like, if anyone'd like to make a motion on that.
So... The- that came in on Friday, is that correct? Um, and what is our date that we have our agendas posted? Is it typically on Friday is when we request them?
Typically on Friday.
Um, was it- what time on Friday did you get it?
Four o'clock, Joey. Four thirty, somewhere in there.
So, I mean, that's like at the end of the day. You- you barely got on the agenda. Um, and I'm a little- I- I'm with Doreen. I'm frustrated with- with this. Um... So, taxes are paid, no issues at the site.
Taxes are paid. Taxes are current.
Any other questions, comments from the commission and/or action?
Well, I was kind of curious why, when we had the hearing two weeks ago, why- why we didn't have it paid, yeah.
If you'd care to come forward.
Yeah. Particularly when we've dealt with it in the past, uh, being late.
Hi, Commissioner. I'm Kimberly Roberts. I own Kickstands. And it was a blatant oversight on my part. Mail is not the best where I am. When we get our mail in, we hit so much mail. I'm not used to the mail. And in my mind, I was thinking, oh, it expires in December. When I did find it, I had to make sure that my property taxes were paid. And I don't know if you remember, about a year ago, we divided up our properties. So I paid it online. And so when I- I kept going in to the Mead County site and it kept saying pending, pending, pending for my taxes. And so I was waiting for that to go through because I know I can't renew it without my taxes being paid. And I- it was an oversight on my part, root causes and oversight, corrective measures. We've got reminders. It will never happen again. I know we've been late. We've overlooked this and Lisa used to kind of spoil us back in the day. Um, and I know where Ria's- she's always- she's not going to remind somebody. You get a letter, you pay your bill.
So Ria, what- what's the date that these liquor licenses have to be renewed when we have the final hearing?
The state would like to have the licenses in around December first so that they can process them and get them out to the applicants because they actually expire on December thirty-first.
So we normally hold the first public hearing in- in- first meeting in November?
Yes.
Okay, so you have that on your calendar for future?
Absolutely. I didn't come up here last year, ma'am. I didn't come up here the year before.
Somebody was, but I didn't- it was not you last year.
And I apologize and it will never happen again because we have our beer license and we have our liquor license. And it's crucial and you know how much I paid Mead County for the license. So it will never happen again. You have my word. I run the business. Um, it was an oversight and like I said, the mail, we don't- mail is awful. But I have it. It actually starts dinging us in the beginning of October to watch for this. And I promise it will never happen again.
Right.
Yes. Sometimes it's hard to pay them, to be honest. They're so high.
And Ms. Roberts, you don't need to apologize to us because it's not our license. So you're not- we're not losing anything if- if you don't get your license. I do enjoy your establishment.
I am.
But I- that's- that's my- that's my point. And so it's not- you don't need to apologize to us. I- I think for your benefit, and there's a lot of people that do enjoy your establishment and it's a nice establishment, so, uh, I- I think it's, uh, something for you. Like I said, it's not on us if- if somebody else has- has the license.
Well, I need you to- to plead in favor of me this one time and it won't happen again. You have my word.
And we did. I think the beer license was late as well, so just keep that in line. Um, any other questions, comments and/or action?
I'll move that we approve the Kickstands retail liquor on-sale license.
I'll second.
Motion and second on the floor to approve, uh, this license for Kickstands. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Uh, note that Commissioner Creed voted no on that. Uh, we got, uh, I guess that brings us to, uh, um, yeah, Dixie's Feed, uh, which has not paid. Uh, the only option here then is to, uh, whether we want to continue this hearing, I would need a motion for that, or, uh, no motion would be to not- that we just go on. Or we could make a motion to close.
Is there a representative from Dixie's here today?
Well, not a- not a denial.
Yeah.
Because they haven't supplied. So the question is, if they deliver it tomorrow, I think the auditor's probably got an affirmative obligation to try to get it set for public.
Which I don't know if we statutorily can get a hearing.
If you can- if you continue the hearing, we would be fine. If you don't continue the hearing, if you close the hearing today, we would have to put it on the consent calendar to establish a hearing date.
Right.
Publish it. We would not have time to do it by the end of the year.
Well...
At your regularly scheduled meetings.
Yeah, right.
Correct. And it would lapse in the meantime, um-
That ain't our fault.
Yeah, you could approve, you know, in- at a January meeting and it'd be treated as a new license by Department of Revenue. We've had that in the past. Um, but she's under an obligation to present it if it comes up.
Then that new license could be applied for by others, is that correct?
For multiple people.
Yes. Yes.
Um, now this is malt beverage, right?
Oh, no liquor.
Liquor.
Well, this is Dixie. It's liquor. Malt beverage would be in June.
In June, okay. Yeah, liquor licenses, this would go. We have a lottery system in place.
Sure. So- so like I said, there's- there's options, which is not a denial. It's- it would just be, uh, to be done with it for this year. Uh, or we could continue this hearing is basically our options. Is that correct, Mr. Clever?
It is. And if you choose not to continue, uh, this hearing, then an application received tomorrow, as she indicated, needs to be set up and published, just like we did from the get-go. It won't happen in December, uh, so it will expire, uh, January or December thirty-one at midnight. It is possible that the license would no longer be available, um, because of population changes. We have been warned that that's a possibility. We have been warned that that's a possibility, I don't know that we've done the count. Uh, you know, more of the county residents have been, been brought into municipalities, and we only get the count based on outside of municipalities. And it's one license per, per thousand, and then for each additional fifteen hundred apart. I don't know. It hasn't been a question, because we haven't had a liquor license turned in forever.
Okay, more questions, comments, interaction from the commission?
Where is Dixie Feed and Holding license currently held at?
I believe the address is Vale, I don't know where that is. I, I know where Vale is.
Yeah, right, right.
I don't know where this establishment is.
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing to...
Sorry, just, um, the Dixie Holdings would be under, um, original spoke Pappy Hoyle campground, north of town.
Questions, comments, interaction from the commission? Uh, if no action is taken, this, this, uh, hearing will, this will be the last day of this hearing?
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing. Meeting, or the remaining?
Chair, second. Got a motion second on the floor to, uh, continue this hearing to our next meeting, which is, uh, December tenth. Uh, any discussion to that motion?
I have a question for counsel. Um, Ken, how long would it take to figure out, um, where we are at on...
That will be known by the tenth. It's a simple call to DOR.
Could you do it in the next two hours?
Yes. It's a simple call to DOR, um, hour time difference.
Yeah, assuming that DOR will handle it.
Forty-five minutes, I can give them a call, and we'll have an answer. They track it for us. Because they're the ones who tell us what we can and can't do. It sounds like you'd like to table this until later in the meeting.
Well...
Is that a motion to table, Commissioner Wazorik?
Um... I'll make a motion, I'll make a substitute motion. Public hearing. Till after executive session. Second.
You're wanting to be challenging today, aren't you?
Why, why should today be any different?
I, 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 yeah, I'm, I, I guess I don't even know why, I've thought differently. Uh, procedural wise, it's not a motion to amend, so refresh me on, on, on procedure, if you would, please briefly. It's just a substitute motion, so therefore it, uh, would be handled as a, I guess that's got to cancel the motion, then, basically. So the motion, which is technically not in order, but at the same time, we do that once in a while.
Yeah, you just vote on the substitute's motion, if it passes, then...
But that's not correct, as far as Roberts' rules would be concerned, but, uh, Commissioner, uh, Mr. Clever, would you come forward and help me through this, please? I understand that, so that's why I'm asking for procedure help.
We don't have Roberts' rules, the chair can conduct the meeting how the chair chooses to conduct the meeting.
Right, thank you, so therefore I can, I, uh, the, the, basically what would happen then, if I, if I accept the substitute motion, is the original motion is, is canceled. And so, then therefore it did not happen, so therefore we'll be voting, so I can do that, so...
Correct.
That's what you're saying, I will accept the substitute motion, canceling the original motion, sorry, Rich.
No, that's fair.
But I think you got that, uh, um, any discussion to that motion, I think I've covered the discussion on that motion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the substitute motion, which is to handle this, uh, later in the meeting, uh, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, we will handle this later in the meeting after exec. Um, it brings us down to, uh, F-two, a, a medical cannabis renewal hearing. Uh, Ms. Cox, if you'd, go ahead, please.
This is for a renewal of a medical cannabis license for Puffy's LLC, taxes and fees have been paid.
Thank you. Anybody from the public wish to speak, I'll get to you just a second, Mr. Jeffries. Anybody from the public wish to speak? Go ahead, Mr. Jeffries.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, my name is Kit Jeffries, I'm the owner and operator of Puffy's Dispensary, for the sake of time today, I'll be very brief. Uh, as the auditor said, our application was submitted true and correct and timely. Uh, if you guys have any questions, I'll stand by and answer them, thank you.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak this agenda item? Uh, seeing none, I'm going to close public testimony on this, and leave it for questions, comments from the commission.
Um, any issues at the site?
Mr. Chair, no issues at the site, um, we were open for the required hundred and twenty days, we were actually, uh, a little bit over that hundred and twenty day requirement. Um, and, uh, we are in full compliance with, uh, South Dakota state law and rule, and, uh, it's been pretty good so far. Uh, Mr. Chair, um, in our original application submitted, I think in twenty twenty-one, um, after the Rabbit City license drawing, we did have some ownership changes, um, submitted, but that was approved at a previous meeting. You're all good? Yep.
Any other questions, comments, and or action from the commission?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, twenty twenty-five medical cannabis renewal.
Chair, second. Uh, motion second on the floor to, uh, approve the renewal of, uh, the medical cannabis license to Puffy's LLC. Uh, any questions, any discussion on this motion?
Um, my comment is, same one I think I have every year. Believe people are sold a bill of goods when this was passed originally, but we're obligated under state law to have one dispensary license. Here, as it complies with state law, so I'll vote for it because of that, not because I believe it's positive for the community.
Yeah, I, and I'm, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Wazorik on that statement.
Doreen had a me too, so, uh, any other discussion to this motion? Hey, we're all getting along now, huh? Discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, thank you for coming in, Mr. Jeffries. Um, the mo, the, the, the agenda's been approved in the second, I, I, I was asked if, uh, we got a couple gentlemen here that wanted to speak to, and some stuff on highway, would any commissioners be opposed to moving down to highway at this time?
Oh, why don't we just go back to routine business?
Okay, and that's, that's fair, if, uh, that's, I, it, yep, we did have an objection to that, so let's go back to routine business, uh, which, uh, essentially, we have no one here, is anyone here from registered deeds, on us?
I don't think the auditor's given a report.
Well, we do have auditor on the agenda, I was going to handle some of that, if that would be okay with, would you want to rather handle your report when we get to that, on that line item on the agenda, uh, so you're not, unless you got to get some steps in today, Ria? So, if you'd rather do it that, I guess I'd prefer doing it that way. So, um, State Attorney, have anything? Sure, okay, thank you. Uh, so that covers the routine business, uh, any objections now to going down to highway?
I want to go to the Tyler.
Okay. Your objection is, uh, uh, treasure Shrekin.
Yeah, because she had to go back downstairs.
So we'll go to four H extends, since I'm, I'm catching Commissioner Wazorik's trip, we'll go to four H next.
Oh, how about the Mead County sectors?
Oh, I, I apologize, uh, do we don't have, Sean, okay, let's take four H, we, we're, that's next on the agenda for who all is here, thank you for being here, Ms. Boyd.
Good morning. Jenny Boyd, um, four H educator from Mead County, um, I had presented to you guys earlier, uh, request for some funding to help with our bathroom project that we're hoping to put in restrooms out at our Fair Barn. Um, you had requested a little more information, um, we have done what we can, it's been really hard to get more bids for this project, um... Like many people, small projects, um, you can't get a lot of contractors, um, to look at it, and so, um, we do have one other person that's indicated they would possibly be interested in bidding it, um, we just haven't gotten anything from them. With my goal of trying to get this project completed by the fair next year, which is the end of July, um, we feel that timing is, um, somewhat of the, something that we would like to continue to keep moving on this, um... We have the bathroom drawing there, um, that was one of your requests, um, it's very, um, minimal, but, um... We've got the bathroom drawing there, I've, um, typed up an update for you guys, just to kind of give you, um, a little bit more information where we're at with this. Um, the people who would be using the building, um, our goal really is to get this more of a community building, and we know that we're limited, since we don't have restrooms there. Um, the, uh, I'm not a contractor, I'm not a builder, I don't pretend to know everything about this, but I do trust my fair board, who has done a lot of work, um, on the building. And so, um, the fair board president, um, Peyton Baugh couldn't be here today, just with, um, him and his, um, job, and so, um, he's really the one who's taken the, a bigger lead on this, but... Um, we still feel like we are within, um, the possibility to reach this for our, um, even if we can't get all three bathrooms done by the fair next year, maybe we could get one in. Um, we've done everything else on phases, and so this may be a phase also, um, just depending on where we have funding, um... We've gotten another thirty-seven hundred since I spoke to you last, so slowly we're, um, starting to get more money in there, and I know at our next meeting, that's a big topic for us, is just some more grant writing and fundraising.
Some questions for Ms. Boyd?
Public improvement now, I think, I'd have to confirm, but, I don't know. Yeah, I think, I think, uh, equipment's fifty, I think, public improvement projects is no.
And this is, this is...
Public improvement projects.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Ms. Boyd is asking if, if we would be willing to, uh, I think, put in, pitch in, basically, so I mean, it's, it's...
Well, as a liaison to four H, I've spoken with Jenny about this, encouraged her to come. Um, I think a lot of the counties help support their fairgrounds, uh, we've done very little... Since I've been on the commission to help them out, I don't know if we've done anything, but... Uh, I think I made a motion the last time you were here to, for, to help with fifteen thousand dollars. So, I'm gonna try one more time, you know, I think, I think this is something beneficial to, to Mead County residents, um... I think it's unfortunate that they have to go out and hire porta-potties to, to use, when they use that facility, um... So, once again, I'm gonna make a motion that we donate fifteen thousand to help with the bathroom fund.
You give, um, eighty-five hundred every year to Mead County Fair Board, and that is to help us run the fair. In my time here, um, I've been here since two thousand eleven, I took a year off in between there, um, and I know we don't have the funding that, um, some of the other counties may have, I've watched... A lot of coworkers get brand-new buildings, and, um, we've worked really hard for that hundred and fifty thousand that we've gotten so far. And, um, and so it's been a little hard to watch all these other counties get brand-new buildings, put up millions of dollars, and so, um, I think...
I, I, we have a motion on the floor, we do not have a second, uh...
Oh, yeah.
Uh, so, uh, we have a motion and a second on the floor, uh, which will open up discussion to the motion.
Where would the funds come from? And when would the funds be paid, this year or next year?
Uh, I, I, funds would come from our... Savings.
It has to be in the budget someplace.
Well, it has to be in the budget to allow to use contingency, though.
Yeah.
So, if we have to have a resolution, if we come up with something new, it'd have to be a resolution.
Yeah, I mean, if we have excess funds... But if, otherwise, you have to have a budget hearing. But there's a pending motion. Not a budgeted item, though.
Look... It could come out of there, but it, it's still, Mr. Clever, it would have to be under resolutions, is that correct?
Right.
We'd have to have a resolution, since it's not a budgeted item, I would, we, my knowledge of what we'd have to do.
I believe that's correct, and Ria, defer to her as well, but it does, you'd have to specify where it's, what fund is coming out of, and by resolution.
So the resolution would have to, so it, it, so technically, uh, uh, your motion then is, is more... Help me, Ken, maybe you need to send a parliamentarian over sometime. The motion would be to place on the agenda next time a resolution to, to fund this, I guess would be the proper way to do that, would that be a fair way to do it?
You're on the agenda, I mean, you, you would have to formulate a resolution.
We don't have the resolution, though, so we need a resolution to do this, since it's not a budgeted item, that was my understanding, so we need, but that's, we have to pass the resolution.
Unless you had something in a appropriately budgeted item where you had excess funds. That would happen in the hearing, but you'd have to have a budgeted item with those available funds.
Four H is... That we assign, we assign, I don't, and I agree with that, but depending on, if, if four H is in the budget, so therefore, if that would, if that's okay without the resolution, otherwise, we can say the bud, that the resolution is funded through the assigned fund.
Essentially, I mean, you're talking to transfer funds?
Yes.
Yeah, you can do it into the four H budget.
Okay.
As a transfer fund.
That's clear, so we can handle this along with our assignments, as long as...
As opposed to a supplement, if you're...
Yep.
You know, going through that process.
The assignment, Mr. Chair, is the assignment of funds simply designating our overage into its homes that we meet the statutory requirement?
Uh, I, well, that's, that was the intent of it.
Or money to be spent in future years.
Yes, I, well, in, in next year, the way I understand the state statute, but, uh, um, that is the intent of it, but it, it could be possible that the assignment goes over what we're statutory required to spend as well, so... We don't know exactly where some of that's going to land, because we have bids on buildings, we have highway projects that we're going to sign, uh, so on, so forth, so we, we're going to have to take a look at that. The plan was, when we did our budget, was to do that at the last meeting in December, so, uh, that's when we're going to do that. Uh, motion today, I, is, we still have a motion and second on the floor, unless we, uh, Commissioner Seaman would like to just wait till, till December to, to include this as well, and cancel your motion.
Well, I'd... What do we, what do we need to do in September, we still have to have a resolution, we don't have to, do we?
Well, if four H constitutes something that's budgeted, then we would not have to have a resolution, so then, you could make the motion now to fund.
While I'm, yeah, while I'm here, and Jenny's here, I'd, I'd like to keep my motion on the floor.
That's fine, so we have a motion and second on the floor to fund the four H, uh, uh, for fifteen thousand dollars, discussion, more discussion to that motion.
Jenny, I did not see a request for what the funding you wanted, did you want the fifty-four thousand, or did you want the fifteen thousand? What was the request?
Wants it all.
I mean, I got to ask the question, because...
Right, I mean, obviously, I would take anything, but, um, yeah, fifty-four thousand, right now, we have close to ten thousand, so, you know, forty-four thousand to get us bathrooms in place by next year, to get all three of them, um...
I would be in favor of giving more, I just was hoping we could get...
Yeah, I was just curious, because you, you said fifteen, and I'm like, I don't see that number anywhere in this stuff.
Yeah, no, she was, yeah, I mean, it's... Yeah, no, she was, yeah, I mean, it's, it needed.
Discussion toward the motion, please. Can we, just so we, I gotta keep this straight, so let's, let's talk about the motion first. Okay, but let's, we can explain that after we vote on this motion, so, discussion toward this motion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Uh, motion carries, three to two, so, thank you. Commissioner Creed, would you like to explain what we're talking about, the pot of money?
Congress appropriated American Rescue money and to date, we spent that three hun, about three-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars for digital radios for all the firemen in the county. Firemen that were both part of municipalities as were, as well as our rural areas. Then we made some line item transfers that the state auditor suggested to follow all the accounting paperwork. Our treasurer invested that money and we have made anywhere between sixty and seventy thousand dollars a month interest on that money. We knew that we would be having some one-time projects that we could not fund through our normal budgetary process and as a result, we have excess money in our budget. Counties are supposed to have less than forty percent saved and since we have at least one legislator here, former commissioner, a prospective commissioner and several county employees, I just didn't want you to think that this was excess taxpayer funds that had not been spent, but we were saving it for one-time projects that could benefit everybody in Meade County.
Thank you, Commissioner Creed, so I, I guess, just to clarify, that motion passed, it was a three to two vote, I believe Commissioner Wazork and Commissioner Leggett had a dissenting vote on that. Uh, let's move on, let's go to treasurer, C1.
Good afternoon, Robin Schreik, Meade County Treasurer.
Go ahead, Ms. Schreik.
All ready, I have a proposal up, we've talked about going completely to N code ten. Right now, the county is using a hybrid version where it is a mixture of nine and ten. Our property taxes are in version nine, our cash receipting is in ten. We're finding out between the auditor and treasurer, it would be a lot, it would be beneficial, I should say, to go to one set version rather than to try to make the two work together. This proposal would be to go completely to version ten.
Questions, comments from Commissioner?
I think this is a great move, we've, we've been on the two versions for a long time and I know the transition has been a very lengthy transition and I understand that, you know, being on the same version will be beneficial for not just your office but for the auditor's office.
I agree.
And the county in general.
Yes.
I want to note that this, we, we anticipated this coming, so it has been budgeted for next year, this, this is just approval to get this contract signed because we, it's, we need to do it soon so we can get this.
Yes, we need to get on their calendar.
So.
Meaning Tyler's calendar, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract.
Okay.
I had a motion and second to approve this contract, for, to have Chairman sign. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries, thank you, Ms. Schreik.
Thank you, I'll have this contract downstairs then.
Great, yep, thanks. Brings us to Highway, Mr. Severn, would you just stand up quick while Troy's getting up here? Uh, we have Commissioner-elect Earl Severn from Blackhawk, you got some big shoes to fill over here, so, so I appreciate you coming today. I wanted to acknowledge, you got anything real quick to say? We got, okay, yep, thank you, yep, yep. Brings us to Highway, Sean's not in the building, not here yet, so I'm sure he's busy.
Troy Eastman, Highway Superintendent. Okay, the first agenda item is the twenty-twenty-four bridge inspection, significant findings report, we have Bros Engineering here today, if they'd like to step forward to present that.
I never like it when you guys come and present these, 'cause it looks really bad.
Really? Oh, you're in pretty fair shape, actually. Bruce Wilson, Bros Engineering, I was one of your bridge inspection team leaders this year, I believe I've inspected Meade County since twenty-twelve or twenty-fourteen, off and on, pretty much every other year. I think we looked at, there's over a hundred-and-ten bridges in Box Culvert, it might have been one-hundred-and-eighteen, I should have looked at that, but by and large, we've seen a number of improvements over the last few years in terms of, you know, repairs and et cetera and replacements that we've done over the years. I should note that I have the, the full volumes of all hundred-and-ten structures and some other summaries that I'll present to Troy here when we're finished, or we'll present them to him, so he'll have the full documentation of everything we did this year. As you probably aware, as we finish, present to you stakeholders, we'd like to put together this significant findings document, significant findings as opposed to a critical finding would be a different matter, that'd be something we deal with immediately in the field. So, I, I've isolated, I believe it's twelve or fifteen or something, structures that just thought we'd bring to your attention, or mostly to Troy's attention, I guess, and, for budgetary purposes. If you don't mind, we'll go ahead and scroll on down to the first, the first map, oh fifty, three-twenty-two, looks like we're, you know, up there north of town a ways, this is, scroll to the next one, oh fifty, yeah, I'm sorry, the first picture there, if you'd go back up. This structure's just an old box culvert, it's built in nineteen thirty-five, we see a number of these around the area, it's starting to deteriorate, that concrete was built with local, local aggregates, et cetera. You look at that bottom picture, we've got quite a bit of deterioration towards the bottom, we've got some re-still exposed. We do, did place a load limit on this structure at seventy-five percent of legal loads, I believe that was done several years ago, that's just due to the condition of the concrete. There's no way to properly actually analyze that from an engineering perspective. We're gonna continue to monitor this particular structure, we don't feel like it's in need of immediate replacement, but again, these are significant findings, we felt it was significant to bring to your attention.
How much is, what was the load limit, it's a hundred percent?
Oh, it's, it's, uh, single units of eighteen tons in combination of thirty tons.
Seventy-five percent of that.
No, that is, that is, yeah, the normal load is twenty-four forty, if you will.
Okay, okay.
The normal legal load would be twenty-four forty, so, yeah, might be easier just to deal with the single unit and combination units. Moving on to oh sixty-three oh five, this is one of the old timber structures we've got, out and about, this one, built in nineteen sixty-eight, seeing a lot of these old timber structures, I'll prob, this'll probably be a little repetitive throughout my presentation, everything where we have timber elements, we're just seeing this across the board, not only in Meade County but everywhere, these, these timber structures are built in the nineteen fifties and nineteen sixties and even into the nineteen eighties, but particularly the ones built in the nineteen sixties, they're reaching the end of their expected design life because the timber is decaying, and that's exactly what we have going on with this one. Looks like we, we were awarded a preliminary engineering grant on this a number of years ago. Jason, would you happen to know what became of that, I guess? Well, I, we do the inspection work and our teams like to continue the conversation with, with highway superintendents and sometimes I'm not completely up to speed with exactly where everything is at in terms of, of grant applications, et cetera, so. My guess is we, we didn't score that high on, on a, on a big replacement grant as opposed to the preliminary engine grant, so, this has probably had a hydraulic analysis already performed on it, if it's something we wanted to pursue a replacement grant on it, it'd be a matter of seeing how it scores. We want to move on to oh eight-eight-five thirty-nine, this is again, this is one, yeah, it's, it's up there next to Piedmont or just north of Piedmont there, right near the interstate. This was one, I've looked at this situation for a number of years, as you can see, the timber element, the particular wing walls and the back walls are failing because they're decayed, deteriorated, it's not getting any better. We've, I've looked at the same structure, I believe, for the last ten years and it's, it's progressively getting worse. Our concern here, as we'll see in a couple of these others, if we had a high water event, when you have that kind of an exposure of the embankment behind a back wall, if you will, that's where we see failures of, not so much the bridge, but it'll wash the road out behind it. When we have high water events, we've seen this over and over, where that water will come through there either with velocity or it'll start circular scouring beneath that structure and it doesn't take much, when you have high water events, to just wash that dirt material behind them boards, it'll just wash that out and then you, you've washed your approach roadway out. So, again, this, this is a situation here, the structure itself is a legal load.
There's no way to just fix that part, is there?
Yeah, I mean, I, and Meade County's fixed a number of them.
We, we do fix a lot of them.
Yeah, I think you guys do that normally with your maintenance people, I know we did a bunch up by Mud, South Mud, a few years ago and they're holding up well, as an example. We see it, so, again, it's our duty to let you know this is significant. Oh nine-three four oh four, this structure is on that gravel road, gravel road, gravel road, this is not new, we're inspecting this annually because we've got some cracking on some cast-in-place concrete beams, we're really measuring and documenting, if you look, you can see the cracking on those, on those concrete beams, that, that's why we have the thing loaded rated at three tons and I know for a fact, because I've seen it a couple of different years now, that we've got some loads going over that that are, are heavier than three tons, it's a given, the signs don't stop anyone, but, did, did we say we had applied for a grant on this one?
Yep, well, I think we received a preliminary engineering grant on this one and applied for replacement, but I'm not sure we got that one, I don't, I'm, I know we haven't gotten it.
Yeah, and the scores in the last couple of years have been quite, you had to run your scores up fairly high, your big grant scores over fifty, which is a fairly significant number and my guess is, the reason we didn't get that number that high on this one is because of the detour length adds a lot of points to that score and this one has a fairly short detour length because it's open-ended on both sides, so. That would be my guess as to why that wasn't, wasn't approved. We're just gonna have to continue applying until we can, the, the magic day comes where those big grant scores come down just a little bit. A lot of counties in the state are also adding funding of their own to buy extra points, you know, every ten percent you add adds ten points, et cetera, so we're seeing some counties, particularly on the east side of the state, are kind of buying their way into some of that big grant funding, just so everybody's aware of that.
Uh, so that structure's ninety-four years old, is that right?
Yep.
Yeah. Concrete structure.
Yeah, again, it's a lot of, yeah.
It's a long time.
If you could actually, I don't know, the other thing on that one is that it's, you can see that the, the stream itself has degraded significantly over ninety years, it's, it's a lot deeper than it used to be, which is a little unusual, so. Two oh five-three-six-three, I just discussed this one with Troy, a date on that, this document is incorrect, if we could scroll to the next structure, please. This is the one that was built, the date on that's wrong, that's my fault, I believe it was twenty-fifteen or twenty-sixteen this thing was built, but we've had some erosion issues in the ditch, probably just didn't get good vegetation established, mostly that southwest ditch, starting a road to a depth where it's actually undermining the riprap and fabric on that southwest corner of the structure, and we discussed this with Troy here and it's probably more of a local repair. And while we're at it, probably both of those west ditches could use some attention. Relatively inexpensive repair, if we don't address it, it's gonna get more expensive. Now, if we move to two four-three four oh one, this is a structure out there on a Impala Place, which is a private access road, this is another one we're looking at every year due to the advanced deterioration, deteriorating conditions. I'm going to venture a guess, and I believe in the second page of this portion of the report on this structure, I noted that it's pretty likely we're gonna end up having to close this structure. Every year, there's a great picture there, every year we're finding more and more of these cracks, if anybody uses this with any weight, the deterioration of these beams is just getting to a point of no return. There is, I, we did note some tracks and it looks like maybe the local landowners might have even established themselves a, a crossing across that channel. It's normally dry, but that channel does have high water events that are obvious, but it's going to become a liability to us, most likely in the next year, possibly two years, it's gonna become a liability to you to leave that bridge open, it's in that bad a shape. It's mostly because of those beams like you see in this picture right here.
Is that a yearly inspection, Bruce?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so we're not six months on that one?
No, we're not down to six months and I, quite frankly, I don't think we'll move this to six months, I think we're just gonna have to make a team decision when we're out there next time and is this the year we're gonna close it? We're gonna leave it at three tons, which is the minimum amount of tonnage you can actually leave a structure open, just everything on it, the deck, the, the beams, the, the buttman bent caps, they're just, they're just there, so.
Thank you.
Don't be surprised if we come around next year and say we've closed it, so. Do you want to move on, I guess, to two five-two?
Commissioner Wazork, did you have something?
No, I just, you know, if, when you get to that point, Troy, who's using it?
Right.
What's on the other side?
Right.
That kind of information.
Yeah, it'd probably be good to know that soon because, like, I guess, like, it's coming.
Yeah, we've been in contact with the landowner out there that, you know, has brought it to our attention as well, while he has concerns, so, yeah.
Does he, does he have cattle and maybe some hay across?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if he's still using it, I don't think, you know, he knows better, but at the same time, he wants us to fix it and it, like you said, I'm like, it's almost too far gone in, in a sense, I mean, yes, it could be fixed, but it's a significant amount of work to repair it and I'm not sure it's gonna increase the load limit at this point.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's so many of those beams that are deteriorated, if you're talking a repair in kind, it's, it's, it's a pretty enormous project.
Doesn't appear to be on a section line and do we maintain the roads down there at all?
Um, not really, it's pretty, pretty limited through traffic, so.
It's definitely a dead end.
Yeah.
It's even signed as a dead end, so.
Oh, we're just, I mean, we should be ahead of that rather than just clearing it, so.
Yeah.
People have some notice.
Okay. And as far as any, if you were to consider like a low-water crossing or something, we just encourage you to contact our staff to make sure, you know, all the hydraulic data figured out, et cetera. Moving on to two five-two-five-sixty, this is on Elk Creek Road, just north of Box Elder, I believe we've seen this before, but this was built nineteen fifty-four, the structure itself is in pretty good shape, we've just got some concrete deterioration at the ground line, normally we see that from some chemical reaction with the concrete on these older structures. Still got it legal loads, but I think this is one that we might want to look at, some repair options on, on those columns, I believe it's only two columns are exhibiting this kind of defect. Again, Troy, this is something you'll want to work with our staff, or probably Daniel over at our office and see if there's some things we could do to lower cost, repair structure of that age, we don't want to throw a lot of money at, but on the other hand, we don't want it to let it get away from us.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions so far? Trying to get through this, I know it's been a long meeting for everyone. Um, two seventy-five seventy-five, this structure was awarded a big PE grant, I, I have a feeling this one's going to score enough for replacement because of the sheer crack and the, the volume of traffic on this road, the ADT on this is fairly high. The page before shows the location there, of course, it's on Antelope Creek Road, there's quite a little traffic on that road, we've got some significant cracking on the beam ends, I don't know if I need to go into a great de, a deal of detail, we've, we maintained the. We've maintained the seventy-five percent of legal loads, load limit on it. Didn't feel the need to change it because we didn't see any changes developing. However, that being said, there is a lot of, a lot of traffic on this. I believe this is also one that's an annual.
So, Troy, one thing that we should also make sure when we're looking at something like that is whether we want to alert planning. So, if somebody comes and wants to do a subdivision on one side of it?
Mm-hmm.
Looks like as far enough out as unlikely, but, you know, not very much further west of that, we had a bridge like this, forty houses all of a sudden on the other side.
Right.
There's a fairly substantial number of homes immediately west of this.
Already, yes, I know. So, I think we'll want to make sure, kind of a call, but to let planning know, like, if there's a bad bridge in the area, subdivision proposal in that.
Yep, I understand.
On this one, this is the one somebody removed our guardrail on.
Yeah, there was that accident here two, three months ago that hit the guardrail on the west side. Actually cleared the whole creek and, yeah, took off the whole, whole side of it. It's been repaired, but as far as the guardrail goes, but yeah, it's, needs more work, obviously.
What's the location on that?
Antelope.
Antelope Creek.
That was, that was at seventy-five percent load limit prior to this one.
Um, I have, maybe I can go look at it when we're done here, but was there any other damage?
The wing walls were.
It affected us in the middle of July, so was it been since then?
Would've been after that.
Right after, if.
Right when it was awarded the PE grant.
Okay.
I think we're notified that same, within the same week.
That's another good reason for this to be a replacement because of that inferior guardrail. You can kind of see it in that top picture there. It's not a substantial rail. It's not crash-worthy and we've got somebody going over the edge of it. That's a concern. Obviously, it is what it is, but with the increased traffic since the time this was built, probably another reason is it'll score fairly high.
It was a significant wreck.
That wasn't the first time this side rail had been taken out either, was it?
Oh, no. On the west side, I believe that rail's fairly, I don't know, speak to it because I have a report in front of me. Okay, three seventy-one one nineteen. Moving on to this one. Oh, this is out on Kentucky Place, private road.
Wasn't, is it, is this the bridge that was?
There's two on Kentucky Place and this is not the one that was.
I apologize.
Yeah, it's a mile away from the one.
Right before I got on the commission.
I thought the same thing.
Okay.
We had the same discussion. The only reason I included this is because this, we did actually put some funding into a few years ago, was it twenty eighteen, I believe? We did some repair work on this to keep this open.
And this isn't our road, though, is that right?
Place, so I'm assuming it's a private road, but.
Yeah, that's right.
It's a private road, but our bridge. But it's on section line, I think?
That's correct.
This one does sit on the section line.
That's correct. The only reason, the reason, structurally, it's still holding up, but that's, that channel's full of trees, a lot of old dead trees. And since we did repairs whatever four or six years ago, whatever that was, the debris has built up and it concerns about, we have, again, a high water event and we plug up the opening and it does cause bigger problems. It's a maintenance issue as much as anything. That's why I included it in there. One that Troy will probably want to take a look at. Uh, three eighty-two, three sixty-eight is another one that we do have a load limit on. I believe that's because of how the, the beams are oriented or in the size and type. But this is another one. Primarily, it's decaying timber, back walls and wing walls that can cause issues, so. I don't know if there was replacement plans on this one. Cox Road, most likely not. Anyhow, this is, you can see that my concern's in the pictures. It's primarily the decayed timber elements. It's not something, it's structurally unsound. If a load went over, it'd fail, but it's more a high water event situation again. Now, if we want to move to four ninety-nine, four sixty. This one's on Elm Springs Road, immediately north of the Belfus River there. We've included this, I think, in the last three reports. Again, this is all fine as long as the creek stays nice and dry and low, but as you can see, that west back wall, the rest of the structure's in good shape. It's just that back wall doesn't really exist anymore. A lot of big rocks and whatever back in there, big boulders kind of holding, you know, maintaining the stability, but be preferable to replace the back walls with some planks. Any questions? I'm gonna go through this as quick as I can, so. We'll move to five twelve, three fifty. Once again, it's another decayed back wall. A lot of these timber planks appear to be about the same age. I don't know what date. I would guess sometime late seventies, early eighties. And we're just seeing failures, you know, from decayed timber. Again, what we have here. And we do put in a standard disclaimer that if there's a high water event in these streams, please take a look at them because we've literally seen, it was in Meade County, South Mudview, a few years ago. We've literally seen it where a person could crawl back up in, behind that back wall and it's, it creates a void back there, like a little room almost with, you know, only a foot of cover or a foot of bridged material, embankment material. We literally had people driving trucks over that. So, that's a bad situation. That's why we bring this to your attention. This is something that we really should, wherever possible, it'd be nice to get these Moving on to five seventy-five, one hundred. Again, repeating myself, same situation. Timber back walls, that's our primary concern. We could almost make a list of them. I might not even have them all in here, but I tried to address as many of these as I could. Move on to two ninety-two, five ninety-two, two seventy-eight. This one, I believe, yes, we also have decayed back walls, et cetera, on this. This also has a significant amount of debris around it, so we have a high water event. We're likely to be plugging up what hydraulic opening we have. That combined with the situation with the back walls could present some serious problems on a structure like this, so. Again, mostly maintenance items. And I believe this is the last one, seven thirteen, two eighteen, on Old Marcus Road, north and west of House Corner. I believe we've looked at this same situation for a number of years as well. It's in our reports. I don't know if we've always included in our significant findings, but we've got some erosion coming down around the southeast ditch that's eroded that corner of that abutment or that back wall. You can actually see the piling, the support piling. If you look at that top picture in the upper right, you can see the support piling's exposed. That's a deep hole, deep erosion. This is something where we, it'd be good to get some additional riprap stabilization in there. Mostly maintenance item.
Thank you, Mr. Wazaric. Any questions? Comments?
And we'll continue to converse with Troy.
Sure, appreciate it. Yep. All right, thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you for your time today. Uh, brings us down, let's try to be brief on this traffic count analysis, I guess. We got several things today. Any questions on traffic count? Uh, brings us to joint powers agreement, Elk Creek Road alignment?
Yeah, this is the safety grant project with the DOT. We're taking out those ninety-degree curves and making a straight line through there, which we've been doing the right-of-way acquisitions for. And, yeah, it's a work in progress. Again, we got bros working on the engineering for this and the DOT recently sent us out. They have it slated for two thousand twenty-seven, I believe, is the date on it for construction. Um, but yeah, it's been ongoing for a while, so nothing new, I don't think.
I do have a question on the project limits that it's shown. There's two green dots or two green circles on there. Um, it's a different attachment. That is not the, that's not where we're going, right?
That, I, I think that is where we're tying in the roads, but the actual limits of like where the, you know, the closures will start, obviously, pretty much on the edge of the screen or edge of the.
That's what I was thinking. I was just making sure.
Yes, yes.
It was a little bit deceiving because we, that's not what's really.
Right, exactly. It is a little deceiving, but that yellow line there is the path in which I believe it's, I don't know, they gave us five, four or five options in the original proposal and I think it's the yellow line where it ties in to those roads, just like the start and the end of the new roads that they're gonna construct, but the actual project limits extend beyond that.
Well, it's nice to have a contract finally.
Yes.
And we still have a couple of properties.
One, one remaining property. We do have right-of-way acquired through all but one property. Any other questions, comments on this? Uh, action? I'll make a motion to approve and have the chairman sign the joint powers agreement. Second? Motion, second, to approve this contract and have the chairman sign any discussion to that motion. During non-alaws, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Uh, brings us down to Dakota Township's request to purchase gravel. Talked about this, you got ahold of the people in charge?
Yes, I talked to a couple of people over there that, you know, have contacted us about gravel at that location and kind of made them aware of what both parties were interested in and let us, let them know what the county's standpoint was. And to my knowledge, that they've worked out a agreement between the two of them, you know, which is better for both of them, I think. And then, you know, I don't really like to sell gravel because we're gonna need every bit of it that, on our own roads, but, you know, if it's helping out, someone would like to do it, but I think this problem kind of solved itself.
They're just gonna buy it from them and have their own pile.
Yeah, and it's all the same material, so, and they're crushing like, you know, starting right now, so it worked out.
So, there's no need for us to sell the gravel?
No.
So, we don't need to take action on that then? Uh, let's bring this down to the raise grant, New Underwood Road. You want to brief us real quick? I know there's a couple of people here at once to talk about this, but go ahead.
Yeah, New Underwood Road, we've been, you know, working with the state, trying to figure out a solution to rebuild this road and we've applied for grants in the past and have not been successful. So, every year, it comes back up again and trying to figure out a solution. And this is a portion just for the engineering, so that way we can resubmit, so that way we have a better chance of being successful if we're, you know, want to continue throwing money at engineering and for the chance that we'd be able to replace the road.
So, a little bit more information on that. The, we did apply for the raise grant and we did not have preliminary engineering done, so we didn't win the first time. We did try to apply for the, just the engineering portion, which is what this, this grant is for, and we applied last year, did not win. And then this would be, again, in conjunction with the DOT for that grant. The estimate was about six million dollars for engineering, which was design and engineering through the project. And then, if that's, grant is awarded, the county would be responsible for about three hundred thousand dollars just for the engineering portion. And if, if the grant goes through and engineering is done, then we can apply for the raise grant on the remaining construction, which is about a sixty-six million dollar construction in conjunction with the DOT. So, this is one step of a lot of steps to get in, our foot in the door even on some grant funding, so. And Secretary Junt has been more than willing to help us work through the process of the grant. They're working the grant on their side and we need to have a decision today so that he can get his grant team spun up and the application submitted.
I have a couple of people, do you guys like to speak to this? If you'd like to come forward, I'm gonna give you guys three minutes apiece, keep things moving along. I've had you limit my time before, Representative Cam, so he's kind of fun when I get to do that to you. I'll give you each three minutes.
Thanks, um.
Please announce yourself, former commissioner.
Oh, I'm sorry. Gailan Needwater from Viewfield. Rich, did Joel indicate why this engineering grant was denied?
No, we don't, they don't get a response back from the raise.
It's just.
Just a yes or no.
Okay. I just wondered if, you know, is this something that they need more information or would need to be tweaked or what the problem there was? And I appreciate the way you guys have been working on this now for a few years. It's just another one of the big issues that faces this commission and I appreciate the time and the effort that you've put into it so far. And it's, it's still, we're in search of a solution and I just, I guess I would like to know first of all, what your thoughts are as far as proceeding. I think that it's worth pursuing and I don't know if we would need to meet with the DOT again and perhaps renegotiate some of these, you know, these tenants that they're looking for as far as taking over part of the state highway for the county and see what the state would be willing to do with anything, if there is anything more that they could do to, to make this work, this, even as far as this three hundred thousand dollars would go. Do we need to have other entities involved like the other counties or do we need to, to try to work with our federal representatives as far as getting some help at the federal level? So, I guess I have more questions than a statement and that's kind of just where I thought I would start, so.
So, kind of a quick piece on that one is usually the DOT does a twenty percent match. They did come down to a ten percent match on this one, so.
Yeah, that was gracious.
I mean, we've, we've been working with them for a number of years on this and I don't, historically, they don't like to take roads.
I know.
Um, and, yeah, I think some either, you know, federal support would be great, legislative support would be great, the tribal support, I think, would be a huge benefit for this area. It is, part of the problem with some of these grants is there's no fatalities, right? So, if there's no fatalities, it brings your number down. So, the safety grant that we got for New Underwood Road or the Elk Creek Road, there was some fatalities in those, there was a lot of wrecks. This one, some of those things just don't really help us in there, which I don't want fatalities, don't, but, but that doesn't help our, our cause. I think getting some support from the people using the road would be a benefit.
What kind of support do you mean, Rich? I mean, at the county level or at the, to notify the state?
Yeah, the state level would be fantastic. And I think if you look at where the road actually travels, the interstate traffic that comes, you know, from the interstate to thirty-four, there's a lot of traffic through there.
Oh, amazing.
And then, the tribal region that comes back down to Rapid City, they don't go through Sturgis. So, I think there's some, some benefits to having those conversations. How we have those conversations, I don't know.
You know, I did run into a tribal, tribal member Saturday.
From Eagle Butte?
Yeah. And I did talk to him. He didn't say yes and he didn't say no, but I think we need to look at that. I also think that we really need to lobby our new governor. We might have a better chance.
Yeah, and.
With Larry in, I mean.
It's a big challenge. I mean, this is a sixty million dollar project. It's not a small one. And it's really tough for the county, for us, the ones that, I mean, you know, you've been in this situation.
I think if we could get the help of our two US senators and our representative, I think they could do a lot to help secure a grant.
Well, yes, let's not forget.
I mean, I, I think.
Thune was, was on the transportation committee for years.
Right, so I think we need some help from their offices to, to push on the federal level.
I agree.
You know, I was reading about our new expensive prison that I think you had a meeting about in Pierre last week or something, didn't you?
The committee did, yeah.
Yeah, the committee did. And, you know, transportation always tells us, you gotta give a mile to get a mile. give a mile to get a mile, and I noticed there was no give a mile or get a mile when they're talking about building a new road to that prison, and so I thought, well, there are exceptions to that rule. Might not do us any good.
But it doesn't hurt to us.
These are all good thoughts, uh, and, and I certainly, every time I talk to Thune around Johnson's office, I certainly pass on the concern, I, I, the prob, the, the struggle is getting it so it's not just a Meade County problem, and-
Right.
And, uh, um, you know, you mentioned other counties, I know, and, uh, Pennington County has two miles of the road, or is it three?
Three.
It's three, uh, so, and, and, you know, they're, so they're a little lax on, on being willing to step up, they've got other problems, and I certainly, if I was in their shoes, I may as well, so, uh, so it's-
They like to build jails and buildings downtown.
They don't give a hoot about that road.
It's become a Meade County problem, so.
Well, but, you know what I mean, the other counties too, like, the county, the license plates that you see on that road are twenty-four, sixty-four, fifty-three, so Perkins, Dewey, Corson, we see, I, I bet there's almost as much North Dakota traffic on that road as there is Meade County traffic on that road, and I don't know if we could-
Well, we need to, and, and that's-
I think involve everybody.
What I think too is, is Galen, I'm gonna switch over to, uh, Representative Kamak to her in a second, but, yes, we need to get those guys screaming as well, because right now I think they're hearing from Meade County, but that's it, and it's, and they're seeing this as, oh, it's your guys' problem, and, and that's, that's tough to convince them, it's, if no one else is saying anything about it, it's, it's tough to get them to understand, it's a bigger issue than Meade County's problem, so, Representative Kamak.
So, first I'd like to say, the agenda this morning brings some flashbacks, and God bless you all for your service.
Amen.
But anyway, uh, I, I had needed a quick clarification, the three hundred thousand that the state is asking the participation for, is that come kicking before they apply or after it's granted?
So, that's after the grant is, if, if the grant is awarded, we are committing the three hundred thousand, they're committing the five point, uh, seven million.
Well, anyway, this is a hundred-year-old problem, and I think at one time I even brought a letter that, uh, that was dated in nineteen-twenty-something about the New Underwood Road trying to get this thing as a state highway, so it's a hundred-year-old problem we've been working on, people have recognized it for a good long time, and it's acting as a state highway, I mean, it is, it's, uh, the traffic between I ninety and, and, uh, the, uh, other trunk highways, the Highway thirty-four and Highway two twelve, no one can deny that, and the thing is that, eh, even in the interim, no matter what happens, the, the south end of that thing, we've got, each, each traffic lane is two canals, and in a high, in a high precipitation situation, it, it could, it, I mean, I don't even know how you'd stay on the road, really, but, anyway, so we've got really some serious problems coming up, but I think that the commitment to go ahead with this, the application of this grant, even though it, it requires a significant commitment later on, I believe is a good first step in moving towards getting this accomplished, because this isn't gonna go away, it's gonna be, it'll, it'll increase traffic as time goes on, and so if we could get that transferred back into a state highway, it'd be a huge step in the right direction for the state and for, yeah, and for Meade County, so, um, whatever, uh, I can do whatever we can do to help, regardless if I'm in a position as, as acting as a representative, I'd be more than happy to do, to volunteer to, to keep the, keep the ball rolling, but I would really encourage, uh, the, the approval of going after this grant, because it's a, it's a first big step in that direction.
You know, since every time we've seen each other for more than a decade, we always bring up New Underwood Road. It, we, during your time in Pierre, what kind of reception did you get when you would bring it up, what, what were their chief complaints, and, and I can remember Galen, when you were on the board, and we had our little meeting over there in the glass room with the gubernatorial candidates, everybody was for the road, and, and, you know, elections come and go, and then the road never gets, I mean, I, I, I think they kind of forgot that, Galen, and, and I don't know what happens in Pierre when you bring it up.
I would say that we've probably got a, a twenty-four-month golden opportunity, we've got Joel Junt, who is just, has really been very cooperative in every way that he can, but he, in, in the past, prior to him being in there, it was almost a slam door as soon as you brought the subject up, so we've got that, that in place, we've got the, uh, the, uh, future governor, if, uh, all the confirmations go correctly, I think that's not, that's gonna definitely be in our, in our favor, and so we want to get, we wanna keep pushing this thing so we can get it done here in the next couple of years, or we'll never get it done.
And I'll say to you, and I think that meeting did have some impact, because I think it was, it might have been, um, that's when the temperature changed, because I think that, uh, you know, uh, Jerry Dur and I went to Pierre one time to meet with Joel Junt, and it was, uh, like Gary said, a slam door, but after that meeting, after Christie took office, and, and I'm not so sure that perhaps Larry didn't have some, uh, closed-door input on this, uh, movement by the DOT to kinda look at, uh, ticking over this road, so I think that did probably have an impact that day.
Okay, let's, uh, I think we're on the agreement as of a strategy that we can take, and I appreciate you gentlemen for, for the work you've done and continue to do on that, uh, does anyone else wanna speak to this, I don't think we have anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this, but let's wrap up this discussion, let's move on to, uh, uh, commission discussion and/or action, though, then.
I, I, see, I also think, you know, one of your neighbors down there wrote all of us-
All right.
-last week, two weeks ago, about the road falling in the hole, you know, and, in fact, it was two weeks ago tonight, and we'd had a long meeting, and I, um, I had a kind of a reply of, you know, there's just no money, and, and you've all heard the, the prospect of milling, you know?
Right.
Um, I think we also need a groundswell of residents from that area-
All right.
-to also-
You know, one thing-
It, it just can't be ten people.
One thing I didn't wanna do is, you know, have a meeting like you had this morning, where you have a lot of people who are angry and you, and there's a lot of smoke, uh, and, and I think it's done, but, yeah, um, I'd be glad to, um, you know, start trying to create some of that groundswell, even, you know, trying to figure out if there's a way they can do it like we said in the other counties, and if you'd like Gary or me to, uh, you know, provide some likes from you guys, I know how busy you are, and it's really, you know, it's where we, it's kinda where we live, uh, you know, I'd be willing to go to Eagleview and visit with the tribe, or with one of the commission members, or, um, some of the other county commissions, that, you know, they gotta realize, and, you know, especially the, the tribe up there, uh, we, I see an ambulance on that road about every day, coming from Faith or Eagleview, one of the two, although I did hear recently that they're starting to go to Pierre because of the condition of the road.
Really?
Yeah, and-
Well, you see, that could also be used as a thing, and I believe you gentlemen, you know the people out there, you know who can, we need to beat the drums, and-
Yeah.
And I, I think Gary's right, there's a two-year window.
I agree.
And it's, and it's, and I don't, I, I, certainly I use the road probably as much as anybody, um, and I know what it's like, but I hear from-
You never stop here, you never stop here, Gary.
Maybe, maybe there's reasons. No, sorry about that, um, but, uh, yeah, we all know what the road's getting to be like, we need to, uh, possibly look at-
Well, I appreciate-
As you mentioned, the interim, getting some fix done on it, um-
Appreciate you guys.
Uh, but with that said, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it, and certainly I don't mind taking calls, it's my friends and neighbors that call me, and, and, and I, again, I know what the road's like, but the state also needs to hear about this, because it's, it's a lot in their hands to, to, to make this switch, I can't, I can't make the state take this, I wish they would, believe me, I think all five of us wish the ta, state would take it, uh, it'd be, it'd be, we'd see action quicker than any of us could reopen our mouths to, if the state would wanna take that, so.
Well, and you see, some of that data might be getting old, the data that we had at one time that showed the ADT on New Underwood Roads far surpassed many of the state roads, and I don't know where we would accumulate the new data on that.
That data is still all available, and I think, uh, DOT actually does count that road as well, um, they do that in their statewide counts.
We just got that last meeting, I think it went up about a hundred cars a day.
I'm not surprised.
So, so-
Well, no, I mean, compared to the other state roads.
And I, and I opening-
Yeah, they had that.
And I opening number would be, take a traffic count on Highway thirty-four after that, that turnoff?
Yeah, and the state has that.
If you take, if you take that, that, that count, not before, but after.
We're, we're gonna have to get moving on here.
We do have to, I think, on line.
Let's get moving on.
Thank you, guys.
Let's get moving on, I appreciate you gentlemen, but, uh, we gotta move on, I think, anyone else wanna speak to this, I don't think so, uh, commission comments and or action.
Uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, enter in the agreement with, uh, DOT for the twenty-five raise grant.
Second. Motion second to, uh, approve this raise grant, uh, any discussion to that motion? During none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries, thanks coming in, guys.
Thank you, guys.
And you're, you're gonna go beat the drums?
But-
Good.
Certainly, yes.
Really, what do you need?
Can you take him to a state transportation meeting?
I need Rich, okay, Rich.
Are you going to email Joel, would you like me to?
I can email him.
Okay, uh, Troy, you just will stay there, let's, uh, uh, Chief Deputy Johns and Sean, if you guys just come forward, you guys kinda work together on this five-one-one stuff? Just keep you on the spot, but-
Yep, no problem.
My apologies, I missed the spot.
There'll probably be questions for all three of you, so, if, if so, it's, uh, just soon have you guys all up here. Uh, South Dakota five-one-ones, D-one is where we're at on the agenda, if you're following along. Uh, I know Sean, uh, go ahead, Sean, just, uh, explain what this is.
Apologies, I missed my slot, spot, I had to move some-
You just had to, that's fine, identify yourself, go.
Uh, Sean Henderson, Meade County Emergency Management, uh, I guess you guys wanna introduce yourself.
Troy Eastman, Highway Superintendent.
James Johns, Chief Deputy, Meade County Sheriff.
So, as you know, um, the state is adopting, um, counties that, uh, wanna participate, which I think is all of them now, um, with the, um, interaction with the SD five-one-one, um, for no-travel advisories specifically, giving the, the counties the ability to, to, um, put these no-travel advisories in the county and thus affecting Google Maps and Waze in SD five-one, the, the app and website, so the proposal is, um, due to the extreme lo, uh, size of our county, to split it up like Pennington County has done before, or currently, um, they split theirs in a east-west area, covering the hills, the Black Hills, and then the, the plains to, to the east, um, we kinda got together and brainstormed this, and our proposal is to split it this way, which I have already, um, uh, submitted this, um, to bounce it off of the, the state, uh, guy, Dave Huff, um, the, uh, guy in charge of this, and what we came up with, if you look here, it's pretty simple, A, um, I won't get into the weeds unless you want me to, as far as the delineation on A, on how we came up with that actual split there, uh, if, my, ninety percent, if I understand, of the population of Meade County is in that A sector there, and then we kinda split, ooh, we split the rest of the county in half, uh, using Highway thirty-one-
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four, yeah, I can't read, thanks, I appreciate it, uh, Highway thirty-four, the other Highway thirty-four, uh, north and east with that B and C, uh, sector respectively, um, and then if you go to the next slide, that kinda zooms in a little bit, on, uh, I fixed it from a little, little alkali, uh, uh, that's the delineation there, um, that kinda shows the split there, that's kinda, again, the more populated areas there, and that's about it, that's about all I have, it's simple, um, if anybody else has any feedback or anything.
Any questions, you guys got anything to say, I know you, we, on afternoon, we were, you were on the way to Pierre, Troy, but, uh, Sean and I went over, JJ and Sean and I, and Troy was on the phone, but we took a look, see if it's workable for everybody, uh, any questions from the commission?
No, I think it's a great idea, I think, um, this'll help, and, you know, for the public side, if the interstate's closed, it doesn't mean it's easier on the county, uh, we actually don't plow as much as the interstate, so, uh, and it's a lot harder for us to get to you, so.
So that will be the convenience, is we can say all, uh, Meade County roads in section A is closed, essentially.
I think it's great.
And the state, did they give a blessing, you said you sent it back?
They have not, I'm, after, immediately after this, actually, I'm gonna reach out again and see if we're getting feedback, I know they're probably busy, um, I know, I got an email yesterday, I actually have to read it, but, uh, saying the winter months are gonna go into effect, I think Thanksgiving, is that what you- Twenty-seventh, I believe.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay, was that tomorrow, or was the?
I don't really know if this, uh, this, this necessarily needs approval, I think it can be submitted by the emergency manager unless the commission feels like they should, I want it to be on the agenda before he sent it, but-
Yeah, I think, uh, thanks for all the work, uh, appreciate getting, getting it in there and, and, you know, the communication between you guys.
Yep, definitely.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, um, bring this back down to the auditor.
The attached will find the overtime report for the last payroll, which ended eleven-thirteen.
Please announce yourself.
Reacran, Meade County Auditor. Do you have any questions on that report? If not, I will move on to the post-election audit results, uh, that was completed November twenty-first by a board of five Meade County voters, Meade County residents, two Democrats, three Republicans, uh, the disappointing thing to me is that I expect perfection, and this was, we did not end with perfect results, in, um, Precinct five A, Amendment F, we had one additional no vote, then we showed running through the tabulator, and also in five A on Amendment H, we had one additional yes, one additional no vote, things that are out of our control, that's how the machine reads it versus how that board of five read it, so those results have been submitted to the Secretary of State's office.
Somebody might have not darkened it in very well, or-
I suspect that there was one ballot that caused some sort of an issue that the machine read differently, and as far as one additional no, it could be simply how the five read it versus how the machine read it.
No hanging chads.
Did they count more than once? Pardon me?
Did they count, count it more than once?
They did whatever they needed to do to be satisfied with their results.
Still, only, pretty close to perfect.
It is, well.
How many votes were counted?
In that, in, um, five A, we had two hundred and forty-two votes for Amendment F and two hundred and thirty-eight for Amendment H.
And then, how long did it take you guys to recount?
About two and a half hours.
And it was just those, you just counted that specific race, right?
Correct.
Not the entire ballot?
Correct.
Is there action? Or we have to approve the? We don't have to take any action?
I don't believe you need to take any action, it will just be in the minutes that the results were submitted.
Bring this down to budget. So-
I'm sorry?
Uh, we can, it, it doesn't hurt for us to approve the, the results of the election audit, I guess, it certainly doesn't-
You can approve the results as presented?
Yeah, it does not hurt to do so, so if we have to, that would cover it, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the post-election audit results as presented.
A motion and second to approve the post-election audits as presented, uh, any discussion to that motion? During none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Carries.